That's what I was worried about.
I'm not sure. I don't know how to fix an iPad.
I don't either.
Sorry, I thought you just turned on the volume. It doesn't seem to be working.
Is that the volume?
Yeah.
There you go.
Oh, there you go. Wrong way. Perfect.
Can I talk? I can talk. Yes, I can talk. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. For those who were here on time, my apologies for being here late and then struggling through the technology to get started here. So thanks for being here. The only time my printer won't work is when I'm in a rush and it didn't work. So at any rate, welcome to the June seventeenth Medfield Select Board meeting. Couple of points about this. For any of you who are newcomers, this meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. So for those of you who are physically present here in the meeting, it pretty much looks normal, but the... It's pretty fast. I shut up really fast on that one. Okay. Yes?
I guess whenever I don't like what you're saying, I'll just...
That's what I was thinking. That's why I didn't just start. I saw you reaching for your computer. It's like, all right.
Sorry.
Where was I? So it's hybrid format. The meeting is being livestreamed on Medfield TV and it's also being recorded. For any of you who are here in the room, if you have things that you'd like to say during the meeting, we'll ask you to come up to either the microphone there at the lectern or the microphone there in the middle. When you speak into it, it will appear not to be doing anything. This is not an amplifying microphone. It's just picking up the audio feed for Medfield TV. So even though it doesn't seem like it's doing anything, it's really important for you to use it for everybody who's watching from outside. We typically at the start of our meeting will just take a moment to pause and reflect on the service members we have serving our country across the world. So ask just to take a minute to consider that. Thank you. Okay. I think the first item we had, just so you know, my printer's really not working all that well. So Rob Quinn, Facilities Director, to request the...
Remainer of.
Remainer of the Medfield Building Stabilization Emergency Reserve Fund for Shilling Field repairs.
And Gus, the first letter is the one that was...
See, I always get a second agenda. So when I had a crappy print, I said, oh, there's always an extra one there.
There's some provisions.
Okay. Take it away.
Good evening. Hey, thanks for having me. So like I said, the Facilities Department is requesting the remainder of sixty thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars in the FY twenty-five emergency budget to cover the cost of materials, design services, and bidding assistance with the replacement of the turf field at the infield at Shilling Field. You guys have all received the scope of work and the proposal from Field Turf, so I won't read through that. But what we're looking for...
Please feel free to summarize it because I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Also, what it lays out, it lays out what they're gonna... So there's gonna be two phases of this project. If we can get this project off the ground. The first phase is this phase, which totals a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. We're asking for the sixty thousand out of the emergency fund. The school department is putting up a hundred and one thousand from the revolving field use account. And with that hundred and sixty-one thousand, we're looking to procure the materials and go out on the street for construction services. With that being said, if we secure these funds tonight, we will still be coming back to the town looking for approximately about a hundred thousand dollars to get this project completed. But the ask tonight is the sixty thousand that's remaining in the emergency funds so that we can secure the materials, cover ourselves from escalation, get the job out on the street, and have a hard number for installation.
A quick question. So if it's sixty tonight, what would you be potentially coming back for, for the second half of this?
I predict about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five.
And then what would the school be kicking in for that half, for the...
Whatever they have remaining in their revolving account. And then we have two items, capital items, for outside improvement, field improvements that we'd put towards it as well.
Okay. I mean, the spirit of it, you know, as a town, we've put in money for the tennis courts, right? So the tennis teams were able to take advantage of that. And now if we can put some money into this, this is benefiting the baseball, softball, and all of the youth that use it. So I mean, the spirit of what, supporting these efforts, I support this.
Pete?
Is this just regular maintenance or is... What's going on?
I don't know the exact install date of the field. I know it's been there at least fifteen years because my son played on it and he's twenty now. Speaking of meet, over the past four years, the school... I dug back. Over the past four years, the school department's put over thirty thousand dollars in maintenance into this field, the infield. The contractor that does the maintenance, excuse me, the maintenance told us the condition of the turf infield has deteriorated to the point where repairs are no longer feasible and replacement of both the turf and the underlying subservices are now required. So we're at the point where we've done enough maintenance. We've done our maintenance. We've done our repairs. It's not worth putting any more money into this product.
All right. All right. So this is the sort of thing that should get on the capital budgets, that twenty-year schedule?
It's been on the capital project budget.
Oh, has it been?
Yeah. And it was slated for twenty twenty-seven at a million, too.
Oh, so it's just gonna accelerate a little bit. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So my question, first off, Christine, I assume we have this money and there's no other demands that we anticipate between now and the end of the fiscal year that would... So the money is there. If we... We can commit it and we're not making a decision but not committing it on anything else that has a higher... Okay.
I have nothing, but I also don't have a crystal ball, so I can't see what could happen in the next two weeks. But with Rob in charge, I feel good.
Okay. Well, so the one piece that I... This replacement was slated for twenty-seven at a million, two. This is only, even with the extra hundred thousand, is only a quarter million. Does this replace, does that then the million-two comes off the capital budget? So we're saving...
I believe, don't hold me to this because I haven't been here six months, but from what I can piece together, there was a thought to replace the turf infield with grass infield and make the entire field grass. And I think that's where they got the million-two number slated for twenty twenty-seven. We can't wait that long right now. The field is at the point where it's pretty much unplayable.
So what that effectively means is that though, you said this has been there fifteen years, so the...
I'm guessing around fifteen years. I don't have a hard number.
Okay. Because you haven't been here long, just a little background on this. When the high school football field, turf field, was initially donated to the school by the parents who raised the money to do it, to the tune of a million, I think it was a million dollars at the time, it was obviously an exciting thing. Everybody was really happy to get a free turf field. And then I think it was ten years later, we suddenly realized that turf fields have, I think it was about every ten years, for football. It might be a little different than baseball. Every ten years, the town then would have a million dollars that it would need to have in order to replace the field when it had outlived its useful life.
Correct.
As a result of that, we put the capital budget account that we're drawing from, normally, we're the one point two million. We put that together precisely so we wouldn't, we would be able to anticipate things and program things, have them projected. So my interest, I think maybe it was a little bit where Pete was coming from, is if this was already in the normal process, why is that not working? What I guess I hear you saying is, no, we're gonna put a quarter million in to renovate that turf field.
Completely replace.
Okay. And then presumably that million-two wouldn't be in twenty-seven. It would be in maybe thirty-five or something like that, or maybe even past that.
Correct.
Okay.
The outfield is grass?
It is grass. Yeah. Okay.
And you're going back to grass on the infield eventually?
I wouldn't go for at least ten years now.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's sort of the, that was the plan prior to this emergency.
That was the hope. But we've got some more relative numbers on that and it's much more than a million, too. So this is the more cost-effective way. And I have experience managing turf fields. If we do it correctly, ten years, like you said, is easy. We could probably get twelve to fifteen.
Okay.
What sort of experience do you have doing that?
I managed properties that had turf fields.
At what?
I managed properties that had turf fields.
Oh, that have turf fields. Okay. Thank you.
So if you haven't already heard, anytime somebody comes in with an opportunity to save three quarters of a million dollars in exchange for getting a quarter million dollars or so in advance, I'm kind of generally in favor of those kinds of plans. So you've convinced, even if you didn't realize it, you've convinced me. This is probably a good thing for us to prove.
We have a star for you after the meeting.
All right. Do you get a motion?
Yes.
It's at sixty-three thousand.
I move to request to vote to the remainder of the Municipal Building Stabilization Emergency Reserve Fund for Shilling Field repairs.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you so much.
Somewhere in our pens. There we go. All right. Next, we have... Penny Connor, EverSource MOU, for the Energy Manager Grammy. Is Penny joining us?
Yep, she's on.
Penny, you're on. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to provide an update on the Municipal Energy Manager that was discussed at a previous Select Board meeting. Gus had some very appropriate questions that I was able to research. I met with the EverSource team to learn more. And just as a reminder, this grant is a three-year grant that provides sixty thousand a year to provide for a part-time energy manager. The goal in talking to the EverSource team is that after the three years, that the town might be able to figure out a way to create a permanent position, combining this with the other funding that we already spend to bring on a contractor that works part-time on energy management. Increasingly, as we know, managing energy, ensuring we are saving as much energy as possible as we renovate our buildings, as well as the benefit of that is we also reduce carbon, is a priority for the town. And the energy manager role will be critical to that. There were some questions about the binding nature of this. It is a memorandum of understanding, so it is not a contract. The EverSource team reassured me that the dates, while we're a little late on it, are met as guideposts. They are not firm. The work that is outlined that needs to be done, Gus and I had some discussion about that. That is part and parcel with the work that we have in play today with our contractor, Susan McThee, and that the Medfield Energy Committee reviews and provides oversight to and direction to. So I feel very confident that this work plan is achievable and additionally was very encouraged by the amount of support the EverSource team will be providing the town, including things like the Main Street Program, which is a program EverSource provides, where they come down and plan a week where they spend in the town and they actually meet with every commercial facility in the town to help them with their energy efficiency. So it's a benefit to the entire town. That's one of the programs offered in the plan. So I wanted to bring this forward again, answer any other questions, and would love to hear approval for this so that we can move forward with posting the position. And long term, hopefully, it works out that this is something that the town, you know, three years from now, we can consider working into the budget or not. But that's the goal.
Maybe before I open it up for questions, just coming, last meeting, I was the curmudgeon that had the most concerns about this MOU. I think only Christine saw exactly how much of the original copy that we saw was highlighted with questions to call. So it was very helpful for me to have the call with Penny. A couple of the points that certainly Penny talked about the fact that this is actually a continuation of the stuff that the Energy Committee's already been doing. I was concerned at one point that we were getting double-tracked, and that's not the case. We also talked a little bit about the fact that the perspective from EverSource is to make sure that the recommendations are ones that sort of make common practical economic sense, so that there's a degree of, what I would think, of business perspective that gets built into all this. So short answer, as Penny mentioned, I was completely satisfied with the discussion we had. There's two points I'd make, though, that go, maybe that you didn't talk about, Penny, that I sort of think it's important for EverSource to hear and for you all to hear. There's two good reasons why this, as long as all the things that were giving me heartburn weren't giving me heartburn. There's a couple of good reasons from my perspective that we want to do this. First, although EverSource is providing this money for three years, it's not binding for us to do something about it. Christine, in our discussions, I think what you're hoping to be able to do is to take advantage of this funding to establish, I'll call it an Assistant Facilities Manager or something, so that actually this person not only would just be doing these things, but we'd be looking at the town adding money to support a position that would... but we'd be looking at the town adding money to support a position that would benefit the facilities area more generally on the part that, that we're not doing. And the other point, in the time I've been on the Community Choice Aggregation Committee, there's also a provision in there to put a surcharge, it's not a big one, it's like a tenth of a cent surcharge on the rates, and it's really interesting how that works. The state has very precise rules, in other words, if you're getting money from people who are participating in the Community Choice Aggregation Program, and you're raising money to pay for an energy manager by a surcharge on those rates, that money must go to support the energy manager who is supporting the Community Choice Aggregation Program. So we have EverSource funding, we potentially have a small amount of Community Choice funding as we try to figure out what this role might ultimately be. Mark?
So I've been through this exhaustively, I don't want to jump in now if you've had discussions, but I do want to point out, among other things, that there is a whole listing of what's eligible and what's ineligible, and if you start using the services of the person for ineligible, it's not reversible.
Right, right, no, I, I'm thinking that, I, I don't know what a full-time energy manager might be, perhaps at sixty thousand, or perhaps that's a relatively new energy manager, and perhaps we could get a more skilled energy manager who also does facility management stuff. So I'm not looking at it as diverting money to do non-energy stuff, but I'm looking at it as actually a way to round out a position that might be a more versatile position even than just the energy manager. But that's not to, that's not to denigrate the energy manager piece of it, I'm just looking for a really good person who we could pay enough to come here to actually do this plus if there's something useful, so you get it, totally get it.
So I mean legally, this is, from a legal standpoint, is a contract. What, what each party contracts for or not is flexible, but it's still a legally enforceable document.
It's, it's, in this document, it says it's a non-binding agreement.
Except, with some exceptions as well, it's.
So who, so it's not Ever, it's not EverSource that has those exceptions, so what, help me understand what you're talking about. Who, who not is a party to this contract has the ability to create binding obligations on the town?
The document as a whole spells out where there is options, and where, once things are done, then, for instance, then the money is due from EverSource.
Yeah, oh, well, sure, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so it's not completely.
If, that's partly what drove my objections a week ago, is that some pieces of this felt like a scope of work.
The first line is, if the town doesn't meet EverSource's standards, as our criteria spell out, EverSource has the option not to fund after the first.
Correct, and that's all, that's all fair. As I talked to Penny, I am satisfied that the perspective and the standards and the expectations are EverSource, and probably, and I would say, Penny, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the motivation of EverSource is to help our town do a better job of managing our energy. So I don't see, I, I appreciate the caution, you are correct about how payments are made, I got that.
All the conditions are really aimed at making us succeed, they're listing things that we, if we want to be successful, that we should be doing, so it's, and they're giving us the money, they're giving us the roadmap.
Correct, and so I think we have an incentive to want to do the things that EverSource wants us to do because it's the things we've been doing. The, the only other point I wanted to make is that on top of all that, EverSource, I've been, I've been sensitized when the original school project for the Dale Street School came up, that EverSource helped us figure out the smartest ways to go about incorporating, you know, carbon-reducing, energy-efficient options in the school design. I, I'm mindful that the building committee at the time was talking about the fact that we're, I was reluctant to commit to some things or to support the commitment of certain design things early in the process, but I did note that EverSource said, well, if you let us come in and help you figure these things out early in the process, there are decisions you can make that makes, you know, would make more sense to make earlier in the process. At the time, I think there were also even the reason for that, sometimes is because we can find ways for you to fund some of this. So quite aside from the fact that I thought I had heartburn on the MOU, there were some real reasons why I would like to see this happen, and I'm actually appreciative that EverSource is willing to help us in this way, and I'm anticipating if we can get this thing done, that, that that kind of benefit will come through.
And they'll help us again with the new school.
Right.
I'm Ken, Ken Cullinan at EverSource, it's the one that we need to get on board really early to help us make the right decisions at the outset so that nothing's foreclosed on the process.
So anyway, partly I wanted Penny to hear this, because after I sat there and it was the curmudgeon, I wanted to point out, there are some actual, aside from any issues I had around the wording, there are some real reasons why I'm happy that EverSource is doing this, and I thought it would be good for her to hear that publicly from me in a meeting like this. Okay.
And, and I don't have an issue, I mean, if, reading through this, after I knew your concerns from the last meeting, it simply reads, either party may terminate this MOU for any reason or no reason upon thirty days prior written notice. So like, we're not married to this thing, if it's not going the right way, EverSource isn't going to refund if they review it and they feel like we're not working in good faith, if it's not the right thing for, for Medfield, but at the end of the day, I think it's the right thing for Medfield, especially, you know, having them want to guide us through some of these projects and do the right things by the town. So it's, to me, it's kind of like, you can't lose, right?
We can't.
So can we have a motion?
So I move to sign the EverSource MOU for the Energy Manager Grants.
And I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Penny.
I, I want to thank you all for your support. I also want to apologize in advance, the Energy Committee will be back on for item number four. I unfortunately have an evening event, so I cannot be a part of that, but did want to reassure you that the entire Medfield Energy Committee has reviewed this, we are committed to being a green communities, and the Department of Energy Resources is going to join to talk about the next level, which is community leaders, and as part of that, we've been on a pathway to position ourselves to be there. The final piece is the Advanced Energy Code, which requires, I think, important outreach and dialogue with the community, which the Medfield Energy Committee has developed a very thorough outreach plan. So tonight, you'll be hearing from a couple of our members of the committee about the plans and how we want to engage the community so that we can allow the community at a town meeting at a warrant to decide if it's the right thing to move forward. So just wanted to apologize in advance that I cannot stay for that, but I know you're in very good hands.
I think Hilly's sweating in the back of the room now. No, she actually looks, she actually looks very confident there, and I think she's prepared. Thanks, Penny. Okay, that's item four, we're going first to item three, wayfinding, presentation from the Wayfinding Committee to the Select Board.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Doug, I'm the member of the Wayfind, Chair of the Wayfinding Committee, representing the Planning Board, so I just wanted to give everyone a quick update on where we are so far in the process, and then I'm going to hand it over to Cory, who's been leading things from Selbert Perkins Design. So the committee, just so everyone's up to speed, consists of myself from the Planning Board, Eileen from the Select Board, Jeff Hyman, who's on the Sign Advisory Board, Brandy Morris, local business owner from Electric Time, and Chris Potts from the Historical Society Board, so we have good representation there, of course Maria and Brittany helping us stay on track, which has been great. So why are we doing this? Some goals that we kind of set out for the process include, you know, we really want to promote downtown, and we want to create a better sense of place when we're down there. So in addition to the kind of pragmatic nature of wayfinding and signage, of helping people figure out where they need to go, there's also a desire just to improve the downtown, and we feel like this is an opportunity to do so. We also want to welcome visitors when they arrive, make them kind of understand where they are and how to find some of the important cultural and historic and retail destinations in town is, is a critical thing, orienting them to parking and clarifying municipal parking locations and things like that, and really focusing on the downtown core and looking at that as an opportunity to create a system of signage and wayfinding as people move through, using this building kind of as the jumping off point for that. And so the process so far, the Selbert Perkins team has spent a good amount of time walking around downtown, we've had some committee meetings, standing outside this building, which was awesome, and then a number of meetings with the committee itself, with the design team, just working through iterations of sign location, look and feel, content, strategy, and all that good stuff. So we also issued, or we had some conversations with some local Medfield residents to get their input, and we'll be issuing a survey to kind of gather some additional feedback, and we wanted to use this opportunity to share kind of where we are in the process. So that's my overview, I don't know if I missed anything, but with that, I'll introduce Cory from Selbert Perkins Design.
While we're doing the position, is there any other committee member online, do we need to open a meeting here?
Jeff's on there.
So that makes a forum?
Yeah.
Jeff's there, should we open?
Should I go back up there and do my chair thing?
Thank you.
Yeah, so to make this official, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to open the Wayfinding Committee meeting on June seventeenth?
Yes. At six forty-one?
At six forty-one.
And because you've got somebody on Zoom, you've got to go through and identify everybody who you really are.
Okay, Jeff, I think you're out there?
Here, I'm here.
And Eileen?
I am here in person.
And I am here as well. Good? All right.
Yep.
Hi, folks, my name is Cory DePiscual, I'm the Design Director for Selbert Perkins Design, I'm very, very honored to be here tonight with all you, thank you for listening to this update on the signage, wayfinding master plan we're prepared for you. Selbert Perkins Design is based out of Belmont, we're a firm that's got about thirty years of experience in Boston, as well as Chicago, and LA, and Shanghai, but we're born in Massachusetts, we're a women-owned, minority-owned business, and we're very happy to be here tonight. We've been working with this wayfinding committee for close to three months, and we've come to a point in our scoped work where we're prepared to present our development so far. This is a design development package, so this is prepared to take minor alterations and move forward with. What we've done in the process is standard for any of our projects with any of the municipalities that we've worked with in the Massachusetts area, and we love to work with local people, stakeholders, to identify what the needs are for any type of project like this, align that with goals and objectives that are set in any sort of RFP, and, and really deliver a, a whole package that the, the town can feel confident moving forward with. So briefly, this is our most recent presentation here, I will review just quickly where we are in the project of our scoped work, some of the sign types that we've identified that will be useful for the Medfield downtown, some of our location planning, and then we'll wrap up with the design development and where we currently land on the aesthetic of these signs.
I think this made a quick note, I just caught on the, Jerry, excuse me, Chris Potts is actually online, so was Jerry that I saw, but she just gave us a heads up, so we have one more member here.
Good, thank you. So for Selbert Perkins, aligned with the town in Medfield, we have four, four stages of our scope, we had an analysis and research for four weeks, a concept design period for four weeks, we're in the middle of design development at six weeks, and then we wrap with design intent documents, where we hand the town a, a set of documents that they can then move forward with a production partner to produce. Going into location planning for these signs, we have engaged with the town to determine a couple of points of interest across some of the more internalized, what we were referring to as districts, just looking at pockets of, of local destinations downtown and trying to categorize them. This will, this work will come in handy later as we're generating the maps that will be featured on some of the signage, but we have to consider all of these points of interest as we're locating signs, so it's kind of a dual effort in what we, what we do in our planning process. These will be ultimately recognized in any mapping procedure by categories as a municipality, it's best practice not to engage in favoriting a business over another, so we look to kind of celebrate them at a, at a higher level, at a generic level. And this is that map, then kind of, you can see the districts and the, the points of interest that we would call out per each.
And this isn't final, just sort of one of us stands, like, we just saw this last week, so some of us are getting edits back to Maria.
Thank you, Ellen. Looking at actual sign types, so when we consider how we look to activate municipal areas, we can only really do that with certain, certain sign types, really, and they become the players in our game, kind of like football players on the field. When we consider the sign types themselves, we're proposing a primary directory, so a large monument-style directory, smaller freestanding directional signs, so something smaller, definitely pedestrian-focused, and then a pole-mounted directional sign, something that we would consider multi-use, something that can be used by pedestrians and vehicular users alike.
Are you considering putting these on private property or public property?
From a locational planning perspective, we're looking for the best optimized location we can hand the town. We want the town to be the, the judge of whether or not that given location is either accessible or through a partnership with a private landowner, or they control the land, the town land.
Also, I would suggest we need to look at the town zoning as well, because a long time, businesses up on Park Street tried to get a directory up towards Main Street, and zoning concluded they couldn't do it, so maybe some needs to make some changes.
I think, I think many are aware of that, why don't we finish the presentation and we'll incorporate that after.
Understood. So looking at location planning, these are, these designations are B1, B2, and B3. B1, the primary directory, is located right out in front of Town Hall off of Main Street. B2, those freestanding directionals, the smaller pedestrian-focused signs, are located at the extent of North Street and Park Street, where the downtown really drops off. And as we look at that sign, I'll explain those placements. The B3, the pole-mounted signage, exists at North and Main, and then along Main Street in two locations, and then right as we turn onto just over the train tracks headed towards the CVS and the developments over there. Looking at the design of the signs, I'll explain the, some of the placements as we're looking at the sign themselves, but starting with the primary directory here, we can look at this large, large-ish, it's about eight feet tall, this is a, this is a monument-style directory, this is dual-sided, and the intention here is to have a few different levels of information that are presented at this level. For the location out in front of Town Hall, we believe this is a great jumping off point for pedestrians to cross-pollinate downtown, if they're here on official business and they want to get lunch, they want to see relative to parking where, how far away that CVS actually is, this map will provide them with walking distance and time, so you can see like a ring on the map that would be roughly five minutes, to help them kind of make decision make right there, if they're going to continue to be on foot or if they're going to head towards parking. There's a few other levels of information here, you know, at the top of the sign above the map, we're indicating, you know, a right to Town Hall, on the back of that sign in the same location, we're indicating bike routes, open spaces, and other historic sites, that way people understand and they can set expectations as they approach the sign, if this is worth their time or not. Do I want to actually engage with a couple of minutes to read this sign, does this have useful information to me? And then at the, really the tertiary level of information that this sign presents below the map, we're calling out, you know, nearby points of interest, namely parks, we're calling out Baxter Park and Metacomic Park here, so directionally, if you were, let's say, leaving here and you just wanted to catch a park, catch some green air, you had a phone call to take, it's something that you can quickly read, make a decision with that information, and move on. We've rendered this in location, so right out in front of Town Hall, the Wayfinding Committee met and we discussed all the locations out in front of Town Hall, and this seemed to be a suitable one where we would look to engage with the landscape and the hardscape there, to place this sign and give a good user experience to folks that are using Town Hall. Looking at the location here, we've tagged in GIS as well, looked at street view for all of the proposed locations where we would look to place these. And again, these are idealized placements, and this is relatively fresh, this Wayfinding Committee still has to give us some feedback on these. Looking at the freestanding directional and, and the visual of it will really help to serve the objective of this. Looking at the freestanding directional, and the visual of it will really help to serve the objective of this sign, but this is a smaller pedestrian moment. And this is usually, you know, usually put at the extent of a downtown to help cross-pollinating traffic push in towards the downtown. The visual of the sign and the way that we've celebrated the Medfield brand to the constraints that it exists will also help as a visual. You know, that, that tag of that bright blue, that Medfield, that's very recognizable text. As we're coming in North Street, or coming up Park Street, or even seeing it in the visual landscape, it helps to identify a real sense of place, which, when we're considering activating a downtown, that's a primary objective. So, on this sign, the information we're proposing here is simply, you know, a walking icon, and then, let's say, five minutes north to downtown. Couple of points of interest there, parking, et cetera. This is the North Street location. This is right in front of the post office. There's a small area, green space there that we think.
That's right in front of my office.
Well, it's a lovely looking, it's a lovely looking sign. You're really going to enjoy it. There's, I think, a need there with folks activating, you know, coming from, out of the post office. That's a very large parking area, and I think you're well within walking distance to downtown, and that's the kind of interaction that we're looking to encourage with this sign type. Looking at the secondary instance of this sign, this is on Park Street, and there are a few businesses down on Park Street that, through some stakeholder interviews, were feeling a little underserved for, just based on the location that they're in. We spoke with the woman that runs a yoga studio down here, and she had a pretty strong feeling that Park Street was a little off the beaten path. So, from a signage perspective, I think, including some sort of, you know, totem, pedestrian wayfinding that says Medfield's here too, would really help those businesses feel celebrated. And then rounding out the sign family, this is our pole-mounted directional sign. This sign can vary in height or length to fit the message as needed. So, if we're calling out multiple points of interest or in a certain direction, this is a sign system, or a sign design we see is more flexible. Here, we're calling out Town Hall, restaurants and shops, straight, and then to the left, the post office, just as an example of some long messages there. And what's nice about the sign being multimodal is that below that, we can include walking distances. So, if this is something that you're walking by, it's still for you. But if you're driving by it, the type is large enough that you can informationally read that in a vehicle. We are, we are suggesting probably the bee's nest of locations for signage right in your, right in your downtown, in this area as you turn onto Main Street. There is a lot of signs in this location, but we feel as though if you're addressing points of interest along Main Street, this is a primary decision point where you would need to determine if you are making a left or a right, depending on what you're looking for, whether it's parking for Town Hall, or some of the businesses that would be down to the right.
That's a spot where we have a lot of people asking to put their own signs up. You saw the sandwich boards?
Yep.
Is that something that we could incorporate into a kiosk or something, or?
You know, it's, it's something that the wayfinding committee did discuss, whether or not there needed to be posting material on those. For what it's worth, from my expertise, it tends to create kind of a hotbed issue with, for posting, with people taking things down and putting up other things.
Thank you for that. That's why we hired you.
Looking at other directional pole-mounted signs, this is heading west down Main Street, right at the, right before the intersection of Uppom, and this is really to reassure you about the points of interest this way before we get to, you know, what we were originally considering other districts. So, your CVS, other points of interest down here. The next sign is actually, you know, what we would consider the sibling to that sign, so serving the same purpose but in the other direction. So, if you're coming down Main Street, heading plain east in our, in our little GIS map here. So, just as you cross the train tracks, this is the sign that's reassuring you that Town Hall is straight ahead, there's parking there, and then Park Street would be to your right, and there would be some other shopping and businesses down there. And then the final sign that we're including in the planning package here, proposing, is this, this pole-mounted directional sign just off of Main Street, as we're right across the train tracks, headed, headed plain north towards the CVS. We're aware of this, this CVS being a point of interest as a resource for the downtown, is a pharmacy. Across the street, there's a small development that has a few resources as well that we'd want to highlight.
So, is that sign right at the corner of 109 and 27?
Correct. And again, these placements are really idealized. So, we'd look to, at, Selbert Perkins always looks to use infrastructure that's existing where we can. So, for pole-mounted, you know, that's a minimal lift from the town's perspective. Those signs cost, you know, they're DOT-grade signs, cost $300 apiece. It's really high-quality design that's executed in an economical manner. When we're talking about your directory sign out in front of Town Hall, a little bit more of an investment there, but high-quality materials and good, good build structure. I think the wayfinding committee was particularly focused on materials that would feel very Medfield. The color of the sign, you know, we acknowledge that the town has a brand, a brand that's focused in the blue spectrum, but a lot of the architecture and signage in the downtown area is more of a green. So, we look to find a color that would be a little bit harmonious with both. So, from a design standpoint, we're, we're really working with the built infrastructure here and trying to design a package that's going to accentuate what's here.
I would say, I know a lot on mic, but one comment that we had the last meeting was, and maybe this got resolved, but whether we need it.
Yeah, jump up with Corey if you don't mind, just so that everyone can hear you at home.
Sorry to bother you, Corey. One thing we discussed at the last meeting was the sign down Park Street, whether we needed that one. We definitely need to funnel people down in that direction, but once they're there, there may be enough signage already. So, that one might have been on the chopping block potentially, and maybe we can put another one somewhere else that might be higher impact. But I just wanted to mention that as one comment from the last meeting.
Did I notice, did I miss the one that's at the end of Park Street?
There was one of those narrow vertical signs that was down in the mix with all the shops, but we felt like, once you get down there, you're there.
No, no, I'm not talking about that one. I'm talking about the one up.
No, so for Park, it was kind of the sister. It was the brother one. You had one on Uppom that you let traffic look at it going towards Millis, and then there's one facing, when you're driving towards the center of town, right near APC Bug. So, you'd have, you'd have a sign at the end of Park Street letting people know what's, the different options as you're going towards town and down Park Street. Because the concept was if you're, if like, if you're in front of CVS, you need to see a sign that says CVS, because you're in front of it. But we want to, we want to communicate what's down certain areas. It's something that we did ask, just if anyone listening at home wondering, we would be working with the DPW, we'd be working with, with public safety. So, any place we think we want to put something, it's just not free for us to put what we want. We want to make sure it's safe, it's allowable, it's townland. If it's not townland, would, would we have the ability to work with the partner of property?
So, that one at the end of Park at Main, I think, needs to be a large, should be a large sign to get people to be aware of the businesses down Park Street.
And I think the committee was largely in agreement there, specifically with this, like, eliminating that smaller sign down on Park and really increasing the presence here for those folks.
And that's the one location that has a history.
That has what?
A history.
Okay. Yeah. And well, the thing that, because I use that street a lot, the one thing we need to be conscious of is there's a blind spot there, because you have, you don't really see it, but just at the front of that picture is all of the railroad arms. And so, when you're looking to the left, someone trying to get out across 109, and it may potentially block that view is.
And that, and really, for our, for our process with, with the wayfinding committee, once we've designed all the signages, really kind of goes into a design intent package where we've detailed out the messages that are going on in all these, then we go into a review where we would support the town's efforts with the DPW, DigSafe, any other parties that needed to be involved to make sure that the signs, current sites where they're being planned are appropriate. They don't need to be moved, shifted, et cetera. If a sign can be moved, a telephone pole down, and still do the same job with a minor tweak, that kind of thing.
And you, when you said something about the colors, I realized something. I was initially assuming like the sign that's red, that that was just a placeholder to show where the sign would go. But you're saying like, is it only the pole-mounted signs? They're actually going to be red.
No.
Nope.
It's just a graphic to give you a visual.
It is just a graphic. Okay, so, okay, that, okay. When you talk about the colors that work with both green and blue, it's like, green, red, and blue. Okay, I suppose, but, okay. So, there's a consistent color scheme that all the signs have.
Yes.
Okay.
And is this the color scheme?
That is, yeah. Across all of the signs as a family, there are that navy blue bottom with that bright blue, Medfield blue on the top. And that, you know, really, that's a, that's a kind of almost a learning device, where we're using a call to action color that's bright and consistent type to kind of identify consistent signs, so that people begin to trust them, the same way as they would trust the seal for the town as an official piece of communication.
So, one more question that I'll just, probably Eileen or one of you, Doug, you can cover. When we first started talking about this stuff, it seemed like a lot of the towns all had some sort of a brand, a visual brand. This is straightforward, I like straightforward, I'm not complaining, but is this, is this our brand, or is there a graphic that goes with it? I'm not criticizing, I'm just wondering.
That is a tough question to answer. Yes. I'm going to say yes. When we, when we, when we do any project like this, we have to observe your brand. We have to look at it as it exists. And if you go back in our documentation that we provided the wayfinding committee, there's a, your brand is, when, when there is an official brand guideline, when a town doesn't say, hey, this is our document, this is how you use our colors, et cetera. We look at three different things. We look at the material palette of the town. Are you mostly brick? Are you rough granite? Are you whatever? Beyond that, we look at color. Like I said, you, there's a lot of greens. We looked at all of the colors that are in your town seal, all of that. And then we look at font, how it also exists on your website, et cetera. So, this is kind of an amalgamation of all of those things, where there's not a real brand guidelines. We, we actually worked pretty hard with the wayfinding committee. Are, is your high school brand your town brand? And we had a good conversation around, you know, the M. Is the M part of what we would consider what people would recognize as signage from the town? Or is it too heavily associated with a high school? We see that very commonly in Massachusetts towns. So, we settled on this, where we're incorporating the town seal in kind of a secondary manner. So, it exists as a watermark in almost all of the signs. You can see it a little bit there. But it is, the two blue values are very closely related to what the town has. And the actual font, it, it's not exactly the Medfield font, but it's heavily inspired by. It's not, it wasn't told to us, so we had to do a little bit of sleuthing.
Okay.
That was, that was it.
Can I just, if that's it, the one, out of all this, the signs look fine. The one corner that I'm concerned about is North and Main. The one that has all the other signs.
Oh, yeah.
I brought that up in our meeting.
Yep.
Just a couple of amateur comments coming from me is that most of the people that would come in to that point in Medfield, not necessarily knowing what they were doing, would probably be coming on 109.
Right.
Not necessarily coming down North Street, because you kind of got to know how to get onto Harding Street to get to North, or else you're coming all the way in North. Like, that one, that one corner is the only one that I would be concerned about, just in practical, because you've actually got two lanes there. You've got people turning right, people turning left. People turning right, there's parked cars that are going to be up in front of them. There's all those other signs there. And it, and I'm saying, is it really the people who are heading south on North Street into the center of town that don't know where to go? Or would it be the people coming west on 109 that ought to have a better sense of what they could find if they took a right, or what they're going to find farther down? So, that's a very subjective reaction to that one picture that just said, boy, this is going to be kind of a confusing snarl. Even if it's a really nice sign, it's going to, a lot of people, there's a lot for, it's bad enough all the signs that are there now that for people to digest everything that's visually there. When there's crosswalks there, that people sometimes kind of over-aggressively turn right on red. It's a major intersection, and the two, the two North and Pleasant don't exactly line up exactly right, so it's not a perfect intersection. That would not be the corner of any intersection that I would necessarily try to add information to. So, that's just a subjective reaction to that one picture.
It's a pedestrian crosswalk that goes across Main Street that's a dangerous one. As you alluded to, you can make a right on stop on red, and you turn, and it's pedestrians.
Right.
Without any other distractions.
Right. Or you have to know that the walk sign is on, because you've got a red, but you don't automatically think a whole lot. It's not easy to see the walk signs.
Yeah. I would say all valid comments, the, the actual, so that ultimately, the reason that I think we provided this was our, our own experience coming in a park behind Town Hall, and taking a left, and then having to go back out onto 109. And not know, like, if you had, if you had done that and not, not knowing which way you need to exit 109, et cetera. Beyond that, just the signage conditions were, this is the kind of thing where we do want to like, say, hey, you know, what is Medfield saying here as you pull up to this if you're lost? Is it saying this is how you get to all of these things? Or is it, is it barking rules down as signs in front of signs that say, you have to yield to pedestrians and the crosswalk and all of these things? So, the discussion we had is that this should really be maybe an internal review of the signage. Is that this condition? And then, is there a way to include that wayfinding differently? Can it be mounted higher? Can it be, you know, can the format change? But from a, from a high-level view, from our perspective, from a wayfinding perspective, it was a, it's a decision point, for sure, where you, where your left or right is going to be a primary thing where that information can really help. So, I, I think it's a, it's one that the wayfinding committee is excited to continue to deliver.
And for what it's worth, for Pete and Eileen, and speaking for myself, I wouldn't categorically rule out, the only reason signs are there is that's one of the usual locations.
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't say that it's off the table entirely, that we decide to change the usual location to either the corner across the street, or maybe even more likely, the corner, not just across Main Street, but across Pleasant Street, assuming we're not screwing up the library in a way that's terrible. But there'd be as many people would benefit from seeing the signs probably over the corner by the library as anywhere else. So, this is, this might be the tail wagging the dog, if you all.
No, we literally, that's what I said, I said, at every slackboard meeting, we get approvals to put stuff right there. So, it is a busy intersection. We just put a new sign for must-stop right on red just within the last year. So, it, it's, it's going to have further discussion, and we'll be talking with DPW, we'll be talking with police. You know, what, where makes, but, you know, these guys know what is best. And then it's like, okay, if we can't do that, then we'll look at Plan B, Plan C.
So, all I'm saying is it's possible that the underlying circumstance is at least a point that could be debated. It's not a fixed.
My reaction is that the wayfaring sign would get greater visibility in front of the Starbucks, because there isn't a building as near to it as this one. But I don't know.
That's where our discussion did go, was a little bit, you know, immediately, if, if looking at the, you know, the left side of this slide, you're like, oh, well, that's not the thing. We started talking, looking at the map, you zoom out a little bit. Does the Starbucks with, they're, you know, they have an intense amount of pedestrian traffic? Kids from school, et cetera. Does that location make more sense? So.
By the way, Chris, I'm fascinated where the town lot, lot line goes along North Street there in front of those buildings, how close to the buildings. I guess maybe that belongs to the Unitarian Church. But all, all those places where the parked cars are parked there is obviously within the right of way.
So, that one will be for, for you guys. But your GIS was a lovely tool. I really loved you there. Thank you all. It's been a pleasure to work with the wayfinding committee. We're really excited to continue to work with them on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Corey.
Yeah. Any, any questions?
Yeah, actually, one more. The, I'm not sure if any of the, you know, you have a list of all the businesses.
Yeah.
Are any signs showing the list of all the businesses, or is it selected businesses?
It's.
The one next to the post office.
We're not, that's not finalized, and the intent would be to, correct me if I say this wrong, Corey, but to start to use symbols, like, so knife and fork, so it's restaurants. So, we're not saying the restaurant, it's you'll find restaurants. You'll find services, you'll find, so that it's a little more generic.
Hidden question was, even if it's a $300 per copy sign, as often as we sometimes have turnover in specific businesses, that would probably problematic unless you can slip the names in and out like a.
So, with the, the primary sign that we'll be dealing with, this information will be your primary directory. And the way that we've designed that would be, it would have the ability to have insertable information. It's going to be two piano hinges that open up. So, you can change that information. That being said, it's still not a cheap thing for you to do, so we are, we are moving in the direction of generic. for you to do, so we are, we are moving in the direction of generic categories and icons, so that you're not subject to turnover.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. Corey, that was an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm curious that you guys have an office in Shanghai. I'm happy to see American companies doing business in China and getting some money back from them.
We are, we're very fortunate. We've, we've done a, a lot of cities, municipal parks, actually, in Sha, out of our Shanghai office. And they're extremely talented folks over there. We're very lucky to work with them. But, um, yeah, I've, I, I've been really lucky to work with several parks for five years, and it's been, it's been a great company. I really enjoy it. But looking forward to continuing to develop this with y'all. Anything else? Doug, you need to get back up here, or you gotta close? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And a survey reminder.
Yes. I guess I just want to make sure, too, there aren't any questions from anyone on the Zoom or present outside of the Select Board about, just to make sure we're providing that space, but.
No one on Zoom, other than there's a comment from Jerry Potts about baseball from a long ago.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the Wayfinding Committee of June 16, June 17, still the 17th. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. So, let's see, Chris has joined. So Chris?
Yep. Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And Doug, yes? Okay. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Medfield Energy Committee and D O E R Specialized Energy Code Presentation. Welcome, Hilly.
Hilly, which one to work first? Which presentation? Oh, no, the Word Doctor, this is actually, I'm trying to remember the name. Oh, I have, I have it on the slide. So we're just looking at the slideshow. Okay. So thank you for having us tonight. And you already know why Penny isn't here, and why Andrew, Gerald, and I are here to represent the Energy Committee. So as you well know, over the past decade, the Green Communities Program has provided significant funds to the town to enable building and equipment upgrades and replacements with energy-efficient equipment, providing the town with savings on energy bills and reducing the carbon emissions due to increased energy efficiency. The Green Communities Programs, however, offers limited funding opportunities for the kinds of projects that towns are interested in, and maybe Kelly can clarify if Medfield can eventually reach a funding ceiling on, on the Green Communities Program. So the state has introduced another tier of the climate, of the Green Communities Program, and it's called Climate Leaders Program, which is designed to open new avenues for grant funding to eligible communities. The Energy Committee has reviewed this program and supports the move by the town to this next level of Green Communities programming, the Climate Leaders Program, allowing us to continue to secure grant funds to support energy-efficient investments. The M E C, the Energy Committee, introduced, introduced the Climate Leaders Program to the Select Board last year, and we're here with the D O E R this evening to present an update. Climate Leader Communities have access to enhanced grant funding, both in the types of project and the amount of funding. You can see here in the second paragraph, the kinds of projects that would be supported by Climate Leaders. The Climate Leaders Program was launched in 2023, when we start, first started talking about it, and the first group of eligible communities were certified in May. Nineteen communities in Massachusetts are now part of this program. And we, we, the Energy Committee thinks that Medfield would benefit from accessing these enhanced grant opportunities. To qualify, and I think that's the next slide, to qualify for the Climate Leaders Program, a community must fulfill a number of requirements. As you can see on this slide, Medfield has completed most of the prerequisites, or is in, in the process of doing so. The last item on the list that we have to think about is the adoption of the Specialized Building Energy Code, also sometimes called the Opt-In Code, because a town can choose to opt into this building code. The Energy Committee has developed a comprehensive plan for 2025 and 2026 to do outreach to stakeholders, home builders, developers, and the general public, with a view of bringing the code to town meeting in 2026. Could you show the next slide? So this is, you can't read this, it's gonna be in your, in your minutes, in your packet. There is a, a bunch of public outreach meetings and publications that we are planning to do in both 2025 and 2026. We want more stakeholders engaged in this process, and want to hear the feedback, to understand the concerns and issues. So tonight's presentation is the first step in our outreach program. And the next step will be a meeting scheduled for new, June 20th, followed by a hometown weekly article geared to the general public. I would like now to introduce Kelly Brown and her staff to present the Climate Leaders Program and specialized energy code to the Select Board. Kelly Brown?
Yeah.
I don't know who her staff is. She's gonna have to tell you that.
Hi, good evening. Can you also let Becca Edson in? She'll be presenting with me.
Yeah, you could close this slide.
Great. Everyone see that?
Yep.
Perfect. And just make sure, Becca, you on?
Yes. Hi.
Great.
Here I am.
She is the tough part of the presentation. I want to make sure. All right. So before we get into the Specialized Energy Code, Hilly, thank you for giving a great introduction to all the hard work that the Energy Committee's been doing to date. I was just like, start off by saying, how did we get here today? How did we get to the Climate Leaders? And it really started by the Climate Act in 2021, where it committed Massachusetts to achieve net zero emissions in 2050. And then the next step is, how do you get there? Well, the Building Energy Code's role in reducing emissions is great. If you look at the graph, you're gonna see that new buildings built after 2023 represent 20% of all building space by 2050. And that means that new buildings are the easiest and cheapest way to get to those net zero goals by 2050. When it comes to the Building Energy Code, there are three options. Becca will be getting into more on the Specialized Code and touching on the Stretch Code as well. The base code is where it starts. That's the automatic code that everyone else, everybody starts with as a municipality. There are currently 51 communities still on the base code. The majority of the communities in the Commonwealth are under the Stretch Code, one of the reasons being that they, that was the one part of the process, as Hilly just mentioned, in getting to becoming a green community. Medfield adopted the Stretch Code back in 2016 at a town meeting, and it became a designated green community in 2017. The newest option under the Building Energy Code is the Specialized Code. It applies only to new construction, which, again, Becca will go over in more detail later on, and so far, 55 municipalities have adopted it at a town meeting. This is easier way to see what communities are following which one of the three options across the state. You'll see the majority of the communities on the map are following Stretch Energy Code with that 245. The buildings highlighted in white are following the base code, and then the communities highlighted in a darker blue are following the Specialized Energy Code. One of the reasons you're seeing more and more adoption of the Specialized Energy Code is because communities want to become a climate leader. That's the newest program at the Green Communities Division. If you look at the area where Medfield is, you'll see Sherborne, Natick, Ashland have all adopted the Specialized Energy Code. But when it comes going from a green community to a climate leader, I know that Hilly already talked about some of the criteria. On the left side, you're gonna see the community, the Green Communities criteria, and on the right side, you're gonna see the Climate Leader Communities criteria, Climate Leader Certification criteria. And what I always like to point out is that it's really evolving from going from a green community to a climate leader. You're going from creating an energy reduction plan to creating a municipal decarbonization roadmap. You're going from purchasing only fuel-efficient vehicles to putting forth a zero emissions vehicle first policy. And then the adoption of the Stretch Code, which, again, Medfield's under today and adopted back in 2016, to adoption of the Specialized Energy Code, both needed at town meeting. One thing to echo is Medfield, as Hilly showed in an earlier slide, has really accomplished multiple of the criteria already needed to become a climate leader. And it only makes sense to have us tonight presenting on the Specialized Energy Code. Before moving on more on the Specialized Energy Code, I just wanted to congratulate Medfield on receiving over $666,000, it's a great number, of Green Communities grant funding. And I know you have an application under review as well currently to put in a heat pump chiller at Town Hall. Why do communities want to become a climate leader? There are a lot of grant funds available. There are grant funds up to $1 million per community under the Climate Leader Program. In 2024, the Green Communities Division announced $60 million to start off the Climate Leader Program, and that includes that up to $1 million in grant funds, which can go towards onsite solar photovoltaics, which has not been offered under the Green Communities Program, solar thermal, heat pumps, energy storage, and then we're always open to other types of decarbonization activities. Well, a lot of communities ask, how can we get the HVAC in our buildings looked at, designed, out to bed, when you're talking these type of projects and the size? We're also putting forth technical assistance and technical studies of up to $150,000 as well. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to Becca Edson. Becca joins me at the Department of Energy Resources. She works under the Energy Efficiency Division, and specifically works on building codes.
Great. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. As Kelly said, I'm an architect. I've practiced for over 20 years, and I joined the D O E R last year to, to work on the Stretch and Specialized Codes, and also work on educating the stakeholders on why we have our codes and, and what they do. So just to step back, as a reminder, why are we doing this? Why do we have these Opt-In Energy Codes in Massachusetts? And the answer is really that, you know, by 2050, we have to have an all renewable grid that's been determined by the state. And so in order to get there, we need to do our best to reduce the energy that our buildings use. So buildings are, are big energy hogs. And when we go to plug in in 2050 to an all renewable grid, we really want to reduce the energy that buildings are gonna be drawing, so that we don't, we don't have to have massive grids and, and substations. And so we're focusing on this idea of the Thermal Code, which really is about building tight houses and buildings that are well ventilated. So it's basically the four principles are having a well insulated building envelope, having low air infiltration. So, you know, I grew up in Maine, and my mom used to say, oh, the house is breathing when, when, when it would be windy outside. We don't want that anymore. Turns out, that's not great. So we don't want a lot of air infiltration in our building. We do want proper ventilation energy recovery. So we still want healthy air coming in and going out, but we want it to be tempered, so that the fresh air coming in isn't stealing all of our heating and cooling. And finally, we want to mitigate thermal bridges. So basically ways that, that buildings transfer heat from the inside to the outside, or vice versa. We want to mitigate that, so that we're not losing heat through, through that, through assemblies. And so by using these four principles of, we call it the Thermal Code, by using these four principles, it's been proven that we can really crush our heating levels. So we can reduce the overall energy that goes into the buildings to provide heating and cooling, so that, again, in 2050, when we switch to the all renewable grid, we're not gonna be breaking the grid. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so Specialized Code, some quick fast facts. One of the most important things to think about with the Specialized Code, it's not a completely separate code from the Stretch Code, it's just an additional appendix on top of what's already in the Stretch Code. So you're not starting from scratch. It's just some additional features on top of the Stretch Code. So first off, the Specialized Code does not apply to existing buildings. So if existing buildings undergoing renovations, or additions, or changes of use, they just continue to follow the rules under the Stretch Code. The Specialized Code only applies to new construction. There aren't any additional requirements for all electric homes or EV charging. So basically, homes and buildings that are already all electric don't have to change what they're doing, or new construction, like, you still follow the rules under Stretch Code. And there are additional incentives for, for more energy efficiency measures that come with Specialized Code. One of the great things about the Specialized Code is that multifamily housing is required to be passive house. And I'll talk about passive house more in the end. But passive house is really an amazing way to build a building and, and have it use little energy and realize a very safe, healthy building environment. And so also, I know there's, there's a lot of misconceptions about the Specialized Code out there, as I traveled the state to talk about it. You're still allowed to use fossil fuels in a Specialized Building. You just have to follow a mixed fuel pathway. So you're still allowed to choose the mixed fuel pathway. You just have to pre-wire for future electrification, so that when we do switch to an all renewable grid, the building can be, is already wired for full electrification. And also, there are some additional requirements for onsite solar, so that you're producing more energy from your own building. All right, Kelly, next slide. Thank you. Okay, so again, for, for the residential requirements for going from stretch to specialized, if it's an all electric pathway, there's no changes. There's no changes from stretch to specialized if you're following the all electric pathway. So basically, everything in your building, all the, the space heating, space conditioning, domestic hot water, that's all coming from all electric devices or appliances. If you're a mixed fuel pathway, where you're using gas or propane, you, there is a step up from the Stretch Code in that you have to pre-wire the building or the house to be electric ready for the future. So it's pre-wired, so that it can switch to an all electric building when the time comes. And then you're also required to install solar, if feasible, to produce additional energy. All right, next slide. And these rules, the Specialized Code's rules for new construction, for houses, varies depending on whether or not you're smaller than or larger than 4,000 square feet. So if you are building a home, so a new construction home, in a specialized community, and that home is going to be larger than 4,000 square feet, so it's a pretty big house, you are gonna have some additional requirements, in that you need to either be all electric or zero energy, where you pre-wire and also provide enough solar to achieve net zero onsite. Again, there's no requirements for specialized, in a specialized town, there's no requirements for existing projects, or projects to existing buildings. So if you're working on an existing house or building, doing an addition, you just follow the rules that are already in place in the Stretch Code. Historic buildings are exempt. And I could talk to anybody about that for, for hours. If anyone wants to reach out to me, I can answer any questions. And accessory dwelling units also are treated the same in a specialized community as they are in a Stretch Code community. All right, next slide. Okay, I'm not sure if anyone's not familiar with HERS ratings. It's basically a way to determine how, how well your house performs with, with energy efficiency. So you can take, see that over the years, the requirements in our Specialized Codes in Massachusetts have become, they've become more strict. They've sort of plateaued out, studied out pretty well, as we figure out, you know, what works well, and what we can achieve, and as technologies and materials improve. But the difference between a stretch and a specialized community for the HERS rating is actually the same now, in terms of their requirements for how well the, the efficiency of the home is. So specialized really is about adding an additional layer of electric ready or all electric to the, to the landscape. All right. So, and then, yes, for solar power onsite, again, if you're building a new home that's larger than 4,000 square feet, you do need to provide enough solar power onsite to achieve a net zero standing. And if you are all electric, you do not have to do that. So there are options. We do see more people going all electric, just because it's kind of easier from the start. But if people really want to have mixed fuel, if they want to have, you know, if they want to have a fireplace, they can still do that, they just have to follow the mixed fuel pathway. All right. All right, next slide. There are so many incentives. I'm always amazed by how much money is out there from MassSave for incentives. And Medfield is a MassSave town, so there's lots of money to be had. It's pretty exciting. MassSave now offers incentives for single-family houses that follow passive house compliance, which is just amazing. It's $25,000, which is a really great assist. We're seeing a lot more passive house happen across Massachusetts, and MassSave is really helping make that happen. There's also incentives for appliances and Energy Star. So there is a lot of money to be had for moving toward more efficiency. And as a side note, again, with multifamily in specialized communities requiring passive house compliance, the great thing is that there's almost $4,000 per unit being offered now. So when we talk to developers who are talking about 200-unit buildings or 100-unit buildings, they get pretty excited when they realize that passive house gains them access to this incentive money that we're all paying to anyway. So it's, you know, it's there to take. All right, next slide, please. So what's the cost? What's the cost to go from stretch to specialized code in an all-electric house? The cost, there's no change in cost because you're already doing all electric in a stretch code, you're doing the same exact thing in a specialized community for an electric house. So there's no change in cost because you, you're doing the same exact, you're following the same rules and procedures. So there's no change if you're in all-electric house in a specialized community versus what you would pay in a stretch code community to build that same house. There is a slight change for, if you can go to the next slide, Kelly. There is a slight change to go, if you're doing a mixed fuel pathway for a house, there is a slight change to go from stretch to specialized. Overall, I mean, every dollar hurts when you're building a house, but overall, it's not a huge, it's not a huge number. It's $13,000 total estimated for an average 2,100 square foot house. Those costs are in the cost to pre-wire and the solar cost, which is why we see usually people just do the all-electric pathway. So, you know, again, there's two options, mixed fuel or all-electric. And we see the all-electric happen more often. But if you went, if you really wanted to have a mixed fuel compliance house, the added difference to go from stretch to specialized would be about $13,000 estimated. All right. Let's skip that. That's just more numbers. All right, so again, for multifamily, if you are a, and I keep reiterating this, I apologize, I just find it very exciting, but if you are building a multifamily project in a specialized community, you have to be passive house. You can be all-electric passive house or mixed fuel passive house with electric ready. But that is the requirement. And just to reiterate, when people hear passive house, the passive house compliance doesn't dictate what the building will look like. You know, it's not going to be this sort of very modern European style. It just dictates how the building's built and how it performs. So with passive house, you get a very, very well-performing, very healthy interior environment building. You have, it's well sealed, it has an excellent thermal envelope, it has proper ventilation, and you just have a really, really great building. And again, if you can take the incentive money coming from MassSave, then that helps to decrease the cost. All right. Next slide, please.
All right, one second.
Oh, sorry.
Can you talk about the electrification ready, too?
Oh, right, yeah. So again, you know, there's two compliance pathways. There's all electric and there's mixed fuel. If you're mixed fuel, you just have to make sure that you are pre-wired and so that you have your electrification ready so that when the time comes to switch to being an all-electric building, all the nuts and bolts are in this building and you can switch over. So you're not having to do that after the fact and have some sketchy operations. It's already all there, it's all ready, and you just switch over. All right, let's see. This is about large buildings. So again, multifamily, larger than 12,000 square feet. In the current stretch code, you do have more options than passive house. You can do HERS 45, you can do Teddy. We haven't seen very much Teddy happen, but it's becoming more popular. It's a different compliance method. Under the specialized code, the only option is passive house. The nice thing about passive house is it has, it involves a third-party certifier. So you, the developer is basically led through the process by a third-party who's certified in passive house and assists them through the process and provides all the required tests and materials and certifications. So it's great for building inspectors because there's a third-party who gives them this material and says, here you go, this is checked, this is done. It allows great guidance for the owner and developer, and everybody knows in the end that things were checked, things were done properly, and you have a really excellent building. We did introduce, just as a side note, we did introduce in our latest code updates sort of a safety measure for, you know, what happens if you're proceeding with a passive house project and something doesn't perform perfectly in the end and you just barely miss your passive house compliance and final sign-off. We now have a third option where you can still proceed with getting the occupancy permit and closing out the funding and financing. You just don't get the plaque that says passive house, but you still get everything else. So we've built that in as a safety mechanism. As passive house becomes more and more popular in Massachusetts, we want to make sure that a project wouldn't potentially be left in limbo if something was really, really great but just barely missed passing. All right. Talked a bunch about passive house already, but again, it's a compliance pathway to make a building have excellent performance. One of the great things, I've never actually gotten to stay in a passive house building. There is a hotel by the IKEA in New Haven, which is passive house, and apparently staying inside of it is just amazing. You don't hear the noise outside, the air is fresh, it's wonderful, and it's comfortable. And people who have gotten to experience staying in a passive house really say it's a pretty great thing. And what makes me personally happy about this is knowing that multifamily projects, you know, they're usually for renters. And so new multifamily projects that are getting built are providing really healthy, safe environments for kids to live in. Unlike in the past where, you know, sometimes renters get the worst-performing buildings to live in, passive house is providing a really healthy environment so that, you know, that's a net positive all around. All right. And again, about the incentives, so you can see on this chart, if you do passive house, you get 3,750 per unit for multifamily. And in addition to that, there's also money for energy modeling and the certification process. So it can be a really great investment for many reasons, including the fact that MassSave provides incentive money. All right. And then, so for commercial buildings, I'm not sure, I'm guessing probably most of the focus will be on residential, but just so you know, there are still options also for commercial buildings. Anyone is always allowed to do passive house, but you also are allowed to do mixed fuel compliance pathway for commercial buildings. Again, you just have to have the electrification ready for future all-electric so that the pre-wiring is in the building and onsite solar is feasible, is available. So finally, for schools, offices, municipal buildings, under specialized code, Teddy and passive house are both allowed, passive house with wiring for future electrification and Teddy with solar PV. I don't want to get too much into the weeds about commercial, large commercial, but again, if anyone has follow-up questions, please ask them or email them. All right, next slide, Kelly. All right, that's, hopefully not too quick, but an overview of specialized, specialized Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'm just kind of taking it in, like, Hillary certainly knows my position in the past with, like, I understand the push to mandate certain things, but I've always been a fan of, like, when you show the chart where if you do the following, it costs you nothing, if you do the following, it's going to cost you money. I have mixed emotions on telling somebody that's building a home in Medfield, this is what you have to do. And I'll give you a perfect example. This is a person that built a home in my neighborhood, and if you, and back when he was planning it, you put all of this different wiring in because that's what you needed for the internet, right? And this is less than five years ago. And I don't think he uses two-thirds of those wires to this day because you don't need it anymore because another technology's come in. And if you look at all the wiring that people have in their homes for old phone lines and for all the old internet, like, those things have moved on. So when I look at somebody being asked to build a new home in 2026, to build for something that is supposed to be going towards 2050, I'm pretty confident there's going to be three or four changes between now and then. So whatever you potentially install, will it be compatible or did you just actually spend $4,000 more or whatever? And people have budgets. So I don't, I'm not opposed to what the aspirational goal is, but to say this is what you have to do, in my opinion, this early in the game, I'm not, I hate to put the mandate. People want to do it great. I understand the impacts of green communities, so then Medfield lose out of money, so that's a balancing act, but it's going to come down to the citizens of Medfield. If they do not want us to push something on them, then we can't, and I don't think we should. But that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I agree, and, you know, this is, it really does come down to the voters, but I, maybe Kelly wants to say something, but, you know, you do understand there's a fundamental difference between media wiring and electric wiring. I mean, electric wiring really has not changed that much in a long time.
Well, you say that, but, I mean, we're, there's so many changes coming in, even like for solar. Solar panels have evolved. My neighbor had them back in, I've been living in my house for 2000, he had them on his house before 2000, and those things got so outdated so fast and it became kind of a waste. So all I'm trying to say is, I just, I wrestle with pushing it on somebody now when this is going to evolve. And as it evolves and it becomes more like, here's the real standard and this is where we're going to be, because even if you look at the goal and the aspiration to be net zero 2050, I would ask anyone right now to bet every nickel they have that we're going to be, 2050 is a date we're going to stick with. It's going to be like when we went from analog TVs to digital TVs. It's going to be like, you know, IDs, and you put a line in the sand, that's what you aspire for, and I don't knock that. But we're, what's it really going to be? Is it going to end up being 2060, 2072? So we make baby steps now, but we don't, again, just my opinion, like, we don't force people to have to do it. You educate them. And I've told you this in anyone who's listened to me over the last four years, when I did my air conditioning, when I did construction of my house in 2000, it was Freon. That was the standard. But Purone was an option. And when they explained to me, Eileen, this is where we're going, Freon will get phased out, wasn't mandated, but I was like, oh, I'll do it because, you know, I'm going to be here for, you know, quite a while. It had, I ended up going the Freon route. And then when I went to have to get my AC fixed maybe three years ago, they were like, ugh, this is going to be expensive, it's going to be like $1,800. I was like, why? They're like, oh, you know, you're Freon. I'm like, no, I'm not. Like, no, you are. If you did this in 2000, I'm like, no, I'm most certain it's Freon, whatever. And then he's like, oh my God, you actually did do that early. He's like, oh, wow, it's like, you know, I don't know, I'm going to make up a number. It's like $72. It was like a dramatic difference. But that was my personal choice. No one had to put, a gun in my head to say, you have to do the following to stay in line. It was, as a consumer, I looked at the odds, what am I going to be doing, what's going to be happening down the road? So again, someone that's building a home saying, I want to have value if I'm going to sell this in five, 10, 15 years, that should be the choice versus being forced. Yeah, that's just my take on it.
So I think that it makes sense to build things as efficiently as possible and to do what we can to counteract the climate change that's going on. The favorite thing that I've learned through sitting through a lot of energy committee meetings was to hear from somebody who said to us that the benefit of passive house, building to those passive house standards, those very high, tight standards, is that the buildings are so comfortable that this person said that the landlords said that they had less turnover of their tenants because the tenants liked the units so much. So I think, and for the schools, it's, you know, we want to create schools that are better for the kids. This is also about buildings for people to live in that's really better.
So I'm probably philosophically on Eileen's side here, but I'd like to explain why. You've just made an argument for many benefits of all of these steps. And if all of that is reliable and true, and I'm assuming it, I accept that it is, but for some reason, where we're going is a regulatory approach that basically says, let's make people have to do it. You know, Pete says, gee, these things are a really good idea. I think they actually are. I've got solar panels on my house, and that's partly because of the incentives that were provided by the state and in the federal government. And I made those decisions, and I didn't have to be talked into it. But if these things do in fact make economic sense, why is it necessary to tell people they have to do it rather than making strong arguments? Put the time and effort into making the arguments to explain to people how that, how these things really do make sense. Pete's point about, you know, landlords, I can picture how a landlord going into this would say, wait a minute, I don't want to put any more money into this building than I need to. You know, what people pay for electricity is on them. I give the argument, and I suspect that, I'm actually technically curious about the air exchange because years ago, when I was involved in looking at some of this stuff, it was the vapor barriers, and the idea of not exchanging air was a good way not to waste energy. The problem was nobody had taken into account what happens when you have really stale air in your house and what grows in it. I'm assuming, without fully understanding the technology today, that that is completely, you know, if we're saying that this is a healthier environment, quieter environment, a more beneficial environment, I assume that problem from 30 years ago has been dealt with without knowing exactly how that's happened. So the issue, I think it's a tough issue, and I'll keep listening, but the issue of regulating what people have to do is a concern. I was on the warrant committee when the first stretch code came up, and the warrant committee to begin with turned it down. And the reason was, we basically were somewhat skeptical of the claims, but more importantly, what we understood was that if you accept the stretch code, then you're, I don't even know how we can do it legally, you were accepting future stretch code updates. So you were binding future boards of selectmen by basically pre-committing. I honestly don't know how a particular board of selectmen can pre-commit and preempt the authority of a subsequent ward. So that, in the stretch code experience, stretch code's fine, but suddenly, if you look at it, if everybody's on the stretch code, if everybody's on the stretch code and the stretch code involves pre-commitment for wherever the stretch code goes, then all local authority over the stretch code goes away, and whoever is creating the stretch code is the one who's defining where the entire state will go because everybody's already pre-committed. So I'm a little cautious about, you know, is this really, is this really, are there no warts? It's okay if there are, but I'd like to know what they are so that when people are looking at these things, they can be honest about it. You know, one ward, I'm guessing, is here right now. The state offers, and this may go back to DOER, state is offering incentives right now. Has the state committed to keeping incentives in place indefinitely? I'm assuming the answer is no, but we're making a business argument based on state incentives now, but we'll make a commitment to a regulation, and I'm guessing once enough people are on board, those incentives evaporate. So that piece of the business case goes away.
Yes, yes.
So I'll throw that as a question to the folks from DOER. I'm, I'm not, I'm not exactly trying to attack you guys, I'm just trying to make, I'm trying to point something out here around how you govern people. I'm assuming those incentives have a limited lifespan.
Becca, you're on mute, but are you referring to the MassSave incentives that she discussed? With it, okay, he was referring to the MassSave incentives.
And any other incentives that there are there, that was a lot of information. And any other, any other incentives that there are there, that was a lot of information. So if I missed some, then I would.
Mass Save incentives are rolled, so it's a three-year plan, right? So Mass Save comes out with a three-year cycle and a three-year plan, which she's referring to. So yes, those incentives will be there for the next few years and then they come up with a new three-year plan to kind of, to your point.
Yeah. And, and to address your, you know, these are opt-in codes. You, you can always choose to opt out if the town decides to. There is a base code that is law, that is, you know, the majority of the stretch and specialized code are the base code, the IACC 2021. So they're basically that with Massachusetts amendments. We do hear stakeholder feedback. We, we have, in our updates that we released in February, we actually relaxed the HERS requirements for existing construction. Hearing from people, it was just, it was too much, too fast. So we've relaxed those. People were really happy with that. So, you know, it's, it's not a perfect document and it does respond to the stakeholder feedback. You know, it's 9% of the population in the state now is on the base code. I, I personally will love it when the whole state is, but I don't know if that will happen. Changes will continue to be made. We spend a lot of time responding to feedback from building inspectors, from developers, from different groups. So we're not blindly pushing forward without hearing what the, what the feedback is. As Kelly said, you know, Mass Save comes up with a three-year plan. The latest three-year plan was just released in December. So I can only speak to what the plan is for the next three years. But there are, you know, for the next three years at least, there are a lot of incentives out there.
And first off, I appreciate the perspective and the, and the role you have. So the pushback you're getting from me, I think, is, is as much driven off our perspective as, as a select board is actually not purely getting rid of carbon. I mean, it's, I'm not against that as, on environmental grounds, not against it. But our perspective as a select board is that when we do embrace regulations that mandate actions, particularly if those actions have cost implications for the people that are involved, we also have to work to have a community where it's great for, you know, well-off people to be able to put lots of money into things that in the grand scheme make sense. But for the, for the people who don't have that much money to put into homes, casually adding, you know, $15,000 to the upfront cost, even in, even though you could make the argument that some of the downstream costs offset it, it's, it's not automatic that we should do that. Several, several years ago, I was involved when I was in grad school studying the energy code that the state of Massachusetts had. And they were looking at the, probably the earliest stretch, they weren't looking at a stretch code. They were looking at tightening the energy provisions of the Massachusetts Building Code. And when we looked at that, what we discovered, if on pure intellectual grounds, it was two, two-by-six construction was best, basically the way to go compared to two-by-four construction. On just pure grounds, looking at the big picture, absolutely the right thing to do. Because the people that had money, that's what they were deciding to do. But the spec-built houses didn't have that because those builders were building basically as cheap a house as they could to be able to get it, make it available to people who didn't have a lot of money for a house. So the, the big picture made sense. But if it's whether I can buy a house or not, then it doesn't. And somehow, as we, and this is only one dimension of how we have to think about that in this town, obviously. But that's, you know, and understanding the pushback, a part of that, a good part of that is actually that question. How easy is it just to keep throwing in, for some people, an extra $15,000 on a house? Not a big deal. For some, it's whether they have one or not. And we're trying to navigate that path.
May I respond just quickly? Because I, I just want to make sure, they're very good points. This is why the 4,000-square-foot threshold exists, is included. You know, 4,000 feet is, is a big house, 4,000 feet and above. So maybe it's an arbitrary number, but we had to choose a number. But the intention is that this will, the, the stricter requirements in the specialized code will be for larger new construction. And again, just to reemphasize that this does not, the, the specialized code does not apply to existing construction. So if people are trying to invest in, you know, a new addition or updating, the specialized code will not affect them. That's still under the stretch code.
I was reacting to the slide you had that I think applied to 2,100-square-feet houses. And in the, with the left-hand column, and I looked at it quick, so I probably missed something. But the left-hand column had added costs of just under $15,000. And then that was offset by, I think, $4,400 in projected energy savings. And, and so.
Right.
I was, I understood the 4,000-square-foot part.
Yeah. Yeah, the mixed-fuel pathway does have an additional cost in the specialized code versus the stretch code. But again, if you were doing a 2,100-square-foot house and you did the all-electric, it's, it's the same, it's zero change from stretch to specialized.
If you were doing that to start with. And, and so the mixed-fuel pa, my, I'm not an expert, but I pay attention. And the mixed-fuel pathway, right now, if I looked from what I've heard, and not my, I, I actually mix fuel, so I, my experience is just fine. But from what I've heard is the people who have converted to a heat pump for both heating and cooling, so they're, they're doing both electric with electricity, they're paying more to do that than if they had mixed fuel where they were using natural gas to heat and, you know, electric to air conditioning. So it, it's not that, when you, when you add in extra costs to do that.
Yeah, the whole conversation about rates is, yeah, that's, I don't believe captured. I don't think that current rates are captured in the, that was just the cost to build. Rates are changing. I sure hope that rates for electric come down. Unfortunately, I, I can't speak to that. I don't feel comfortable enough. But I know that currently, gas is cheaper. I don't know how long that will be the case for. That's going to be something that.
But, but yeah, because we don't know, that's, that's. So incidentally, just now that I've, I've hammered on all things, the one thing that I liked about this was the emphasis on, on cons, energy conservation. I, I honestly think that in the big picture, when you said it was only switch over, the, the require, the electric, the power requirements of houses will be markedly less. I, I think in the big picture, that's from a strategic standpoint where we need to get to. It's not where everybody's focused. Offsetting that, I guess, is the projected electricity requirements for AI. And so I don't, you know, maybe the houses will be better, but I don't know whether we're going to be better off. So I, I would point out, that was actually one thing that I, I picked up in your presentation, which I believe is headed in a really good direction. And if I looked at all this and said, well, is this doing something really good? That's a big piece for me is that I, I just think we have to get there on that, so.
Yeah, as an architect, I get excited about the building, the technology, the building science that goes into making tighter houses that are well-ventilated and properly ventilated. It's, it's really exciting to see the future of these buildings and just seeing how much less energy they require to, to function and also function better.
Get people to wear sweaters more in the winter time and you get another 20%. That's, that's all, that's all I had. Thank you.
I want to thank you and Kelly for your time and your wonderful presentation here to the select board.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. And please reach out with any, any questions. You can find me at stretchcode@mass.gov. So I'm always happy to ask, ever answer any, I can ask questions, to answer any questions that come up about the codes, so.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. Great time. Thank you.
So as I said earlier, the Energy Committee wants to, you know, has, has approved an extensive outreach plan for the next year so we can engage more stakeholders, hear the issues and concerns and, you know, in different media and, you know, regularly throughout the year. And we hope that we can bring it to town meeting and have the voters decide on that issue, not forcing anybody, but, you know, educating, like you said.
Chris, just so you, you should do all that stuff. So this is not letting you off the hook. But I believe with that thing that we signed about a month ago, part of that commitment, I believe, the thing I signed, was a commitment to bring this code before the town meeting. I think we, we've actually already, because of the document that we signed, we, you will have it. I mean, I anticipate unless there's some unforeseen circumstances, you will have it at the town meeting.
Okay.
The real issue is how good a job you can, it's, it, part of, part of this is, it's easy to convince people who have their own house to sign up for regulations that impose added cost on people who are going to come in and build houses because they don't necessarily go through, if that's a cost-adding factor to the price of a new house, they don't necessarily go to the second-order effect that says, when I go and buy another house, I'm going to pay for it. They only say, that's not affecting me, so we can do it. And I'm cautious about that around just public opinion. I think you heard where we're coming from around what the, what the apprehension is. There's one argument that I don't want to hear anybody rely on. The state is giving us money to town. I, I, that one really doesn't resonate with me because some people would jump off a cliff if the state would offer them enough of an incentive. And I, I want to make sure we don't jump off cliffs just because the state said they'd give us extra money. That's, that's a nice thing. That's a good reason why we might want to put the time and effort into looking at it. But it's got to stand on the merits with, with both current and future residents of the area.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary.
Thanks, Hillary.
All right, next is, I think we have a request from Noel Powell from Aaron, I got it, Aaron App Sellers to request a farmer's market wine license under MGL Chapter 138, Section 15F in order to participate in the Medfield Community Market. We're getting smarter about community markets and licenses, so. Is Noel on to speed? There he is. Okay.
So you know.
Take it away, Noel.
Well, good evening. This, I'm Noel Powell. I'm the owner and winemaker of Aaron App Sellers. We're a farm winery located in Westford, Massachusetts, with vineyards in both South Dartmouth as well as Lancaster. And we, a large part of our sales strategy is direct-to-consumer sales of our wine, direct to people through farmers' markets, where we reach out and encounter people who are passionate about local, local foods and local, local beverages. And so we are seeking to join the Medfield Community Market this summer as, as, as a wine vendor, offering our wine for sale by the bottle for take-home consumption as well as sampling at the market so that people can try it before they buy it.
I'm not opposed, but I will kind of chuckle. Isn't it just our last meeting when we had a discussion and they said, oh, don't worry about it, there's no competition? We're like, we'll, we'll make sure there's not like a whole, a whole row of people serving wine. And then the very next meeting, I'm like, okay, we have another wine group coming in.
Well, it's not another.
Well, the, yes, Bliss Point Meadery and I, we are planning on alternating days. So there will only be one wine vendor at the market each week.
Okay, all right.
And for the record, I think the, the competition discussion, though, was that we wouldn't have multiple, multiple wineries.
Yes.
Because I think there could potentially not just be a meadery and a winery, but there could be distilleries. And so, and, and a brewery. And, and the idea, I think, I came away last week at least with, there might be one or all of, all four of those kinds of beverages, but there won't be two of any one of them. Partly, I guess, because you guys don't really want us to be sitting there competing with another winery at the same market.
It comes to the manager.
It, it does depend on the size of the market, but most, most markets really can only support one winery per week.
Well, and they had said to us last time that there was no intent to have a lot. So you just answered it, which is an important one, that if you're going to basically be doing alternate Sundays, that you'll be there every other Sunday and the other gentleman will be there every other. If you're not going to be there competing every week, yeah, I'm fine with that.
I, unless, Pete, Pete, why don't you talk?
I'm fine with this.
So unless we as a select board are intending to apply that restriction, I'm going to say that that's an operating decision that the two of them have made. That's not a restriction on the license we will grant. That's not to encourage you to both show up all the time, but I don't think we want to get in the business of that kind of, if that's how you are doing it, that's great. If that's how the market manager wants to do it, that's great. That's not, we're not going to stick our nose into that. If we give you the license, you got the license.
100%. The only reason I was saying that is if, if it got to be, like, the running joke would be like, every week we get somebody. So next summer, we've got 12 people. We were talking about people drinking. One little ounce of a sample, I'm not concerned about. But if you can suddenly start going around and sampling, then we throw everything out the window with people at nine o'clock in the morning having alcohol, which is, you missed last, our last meeting, but we have kind of a rule where we don't particularly encourage any of our groups to start serving beer, wine, or anything before 11:00 or 12:00.
12.
12. I can't remember what, I can't remember what. Noon, just because like a lot of these events have young kids, so that goes out the window. We're, I'm good with this.
We, we, we've allowed 11:00 AM setups as long as nothing happens until noon, so it's a.
So the statute that was set off for wineries in the first place put the sampling at one ounce up to five. And then when they just added the other types of alcohol, they left the existing statute. So my concern would be if we had a distillery, that to me is a whole different scenario.
Good catch.
Well, actually, when the, the original statute, when it was passed back in 20, to 2010, I think it was, I mean, that, it really only, it only applied to farm wineries. And so it was written as a one-ounce sample of wine and five, five samples per customer. The recent update in the past year that added the breweries and the distilleries, breweries are still held to that one-ounce limit as well. Distilleries are actually only a quarter ounce. And I think they are only allowed four, four samples. And I mean, it's, it's with essentially trying to standardize across all the different types of, you know, the, the alcohol by volume so that, I mean, if, if somebody were to actually come up and want to sample, you know, as much as they could, they would not get more than a standard glass of wine, max.
Okay. Works for me.
I would move to issue a farmer's market wine license to Arrow Napp Sellers under the reference statute in order to participate in the Medfield Community Market.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye. Great.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next is a public hearing for a solicitor's license for active environmental. I think the lead applicant is Tate Merrill, but it's also Chet Germer and Porter Merrill. They're not here. So we won't be wasting their time. I, I will make a comment. I bet you you both caught this. This is the first time we've had a pest control.
Yeah.
Door-to-door solicitor. And when they do show up, I'm going to have a lot of questions. I, I assume, first off, I don't know what pests they hope to control, and that might make a difference. But I assume that if it's anything having to do with insecticides or anything like that, that there's, I think, licensing that's required, certification that's required. So this is not quite the same as putting solar panels on roofs. This is a different one if, if they come back. So they didn't show up.
You're on, you're on different technologies of.
Yeah.
Safe, so-called.
If by any chance they're listening and they haven't shown up and they're not ready, then I just want to give them the heads up. You're going to have to come in and be prepared to answer some questions, at least from my perspective. Because the idea of door-to-door salespeople just coming around and applying things. I go out after my neighbors, they're fogging. It happened to be the wind was blowing toward my house the day they were walking down. I went out and tracked the guy down. For some reason, they wear masks when they're standing. But, but in his case, it was, I know there's a lot of mosquito and tick applications that are like, I think one of them's eucalyptus oil and one's citronella and. that are like, I think one of them's eucalyptus oil and one's citronella and other stuff, so I, I think it's okay. On the other hand, I got a lot of flyers this year from mosquito control companies, and if you read carefully, it's mosquitoes, ticks, spiders, and other insects. So it's like, I don't, I, I'm not sure, and some of them actually say, and we have organic options available, which means that's not what you're putting down. So I'm, I'm, again, from an environmental standpoint, all of those things kill a lot of good animals and, or good insects. And I understand people are afraid of spiders, but spiders kill a lot of insects too, so maybe you should get used to them.
Stall bat houses. Draw a line at Centipede, though, just in the town halls, just saying. Brittany and I were drawing our line at Centipede.
Hi, Hilly Passas, 24 Marlin Road, and comment on what you were just saying, that there's sometimes drift or fog. I'm personally aware of about half a dozen cases of neighbors' yard getting significant drift. And you can contact the Mass Extension, the chief chemist, and they will come in and do sampling of your vegetation to see if your yard was affected. I know of several yards, including mine, where the whole season, the whole summer's crop was condemned because of drift. And I'm also aware of at least one case where the applicators got the wrong address and treated the wrong. So what you can also do is you can request the company to send you their full ingredient list. Mostly, the, you know, the, the insecticide that they use is persistent on all surfaces for several weeks. The half, half-life of it is about, well, varies, on average about 200 days, more or less. So, you know, you know that if you apply this every month, you have that persistent insecticide on every surface, every vegetation and every surface in your home and your, or around your garden. So it's not only your, it's the other insects, but it's listed as a potential carcinogen.
So this is a public hearing, newspaper already, so.
Well, I haven't opened the public hearing, 'cause nobody showed up for it, so.
All right, so it doesn't matter whether you open it or not.
I didn't open it, yeah, okay.
Thank you, yeah.
Do you want me to close it?
I just wanted to make people aware that if they feel they've been affected by drift, that they can contact the applicator for get, to get a full ingredient list and to contact the state to get guidance on what to do.
Yeah, I, I made my comments only because they didn't show up. If by any chance they hear this, I, I, I sometimes sort of bushwhack people with my questions, but it's not 'cause I enjoy doing that, it's just that I don't get a chance to give them a heads up, so my comments, that was why I did it. And the fact that the general public probably ought to be thinking harder about that stuff, and to your point.
If I could, if I could also mention, what I learned in the process is, you know, there, the state does spraying, and instead of using the persistent insecticide that they, that these applicators apply to your garden during the day when there's no mosquitoes left, the state specifically applies a very short-lived insecticide in the evening hours over the area where the mosquitoes fly. So this is much more targeted and, and it doesn't affect other insects as much. And in your yard, you can also use the mosquito dunk method to break the, the life cycle of the, the mosquitoes and reduce the overall population. And the people I've talked to who've used it, I say it's extremely effective and you have absolutely no residue elsewhere. So it's an organic, no sprayer.
There you go.
And for my money, after last year, we had an incredible number of dragonflies, and we had no mosquitoes. So I, I, you know, we're in a spot where a lot of dragonflies seem to like to be, and I like to see them, so.
And it's, it's much cheaper.
Plus, it's nicer in the yard. Okay, thanks. All right, enough said there. So if the public hearing had been open, then it would now be closed, but we didn't. Next item discussion is setting up a committee for review of parcel B of the former Medfield State Hospital. So this is a continuation of the discussion that we've already had around how to move forward from here. I, I, I won't insist on starting with this unless the two of you would like me to, but what I did is I, you recall last time, I sort of had an ad hoc process flow. I've just pushed it slightly farther ahead. And it, I'm not, this is not a recommendation. This was me trying to lay out conceptually what we might wanna do, and it's strictly provided for the, your, the two of your reaction and thoughts, and none of this is something that would, you know, we can change it. I'm just trying to figure out how, how do we make this work and get to a place that is actionable. If you want, I'll quick, you want me to quick go through this and then that starts it, or does anybody wanna start?
No, jump right in.
So this is a little bit of a, of an expansion of the graphic that I had with me last time. And basically, there's two flows. There were a couple of things that in that, this public discussion we had that questioned whether we could, in fact, designate 12 acres anymore. And I think we've sort of established that the state has already indicated they'll let us do that. And the, and the other piece of it is, in discussions and even some of your comments, Bill, that says we need 12 acres. It sounds like probably before we would issue an RFP, we would wanna be able to tell people what those 12 acres are. The other advantage of telling, figuring out what those 12 acres would be is to, I think, reduce some of the concerns some people have that think we're gonna develop the sledding hill. So if we, if we, if we designate those 12 acres and it's not on the sledding hill, I'm hoping that some of that misperception would go away. So that's, that's on our side, because it seems, and I don't mean that we necessarily are the ones to decide, I'm just saying we should drive a process of figuring out what exactly land do we wanna put up for, for a potential sale. At the same time, or nearly the same time that's happening, I suggested that we need a requi, I'm suggesting here that we need a requirements committee, that, it may not be a good name, but this is basically putting together a concept for what the town's requirements are for the potential sale of that land. That doesn't mean a commercial, a commercial recreation facility and a little parks and rec add-on that we own, I think it's gonna have to be created. And we're gonna have to identify requirements in a broader sense than that, so that you could, you know, there's something we're trying to accomplish with that land. In fact, some, a couple of people have commented, well, there might be a couple of different things you could accomplish with that land. And basically, I'm suggesting we need a, a committee to be formed that pulls the stakeholders that, that we believe are the key ones. But we know Parks and Rec is one, but there's also some other town departments. There may be other organizations in town that you just look at and say, look, we want you all to come together and help us define a broad-based statement of what we would hope to get by way of a benefit from this land if we sold it. And I also think that committee would have to run a couple of public events for the general public to weigh in on whatever that committee's doing. Out of that, what you'd have is the definition of what's the, what's the, basically, it would be what's required, and it would imply what the, what the criteria will probably need to be to evaluate any proposals and how well they respond to those requirements. That would then, those two things would then feed into an RFP development committee whose job it would be to actually put the RFP together, that could be put out for, for potential better proposals. There might, that might include, as it did in the case of the development committee for the state hospital, that could, that might be an issuance of an RFI before an RFP, just to get inputs from potential developers. But that would be the committee that would be sort of more concerned about crafting an effective and, a compliant and, you know, clear RFP package that could be issued. So I'm guessing, Christine, that probably somebody in facilities would be involved in that from the contracting standpoint, but there, you know, it'd be nice to have some of the tal, kind of talent we have for the state hospital development committee involved in that as well. It's more of the business trans, contractual thing, Mark.
Yeah, and you may also need to put in there, as we did on Hinckley, we ended up having to do an engineered plan. I don't know what the title looks like on that parcel, probably not separate it out. I could be wrong about that. You need to define it. At some point, you would have to anyway.
So, so, is that as far as, establishing the subdivision is what you're talking about, or is it?
Well, it's, in a number of contexts, the most fundamental, identifying the parcel, it's a deal of redevelopment or whatever it's called. And if there is an identifiable, identifiable title, parcel, in other words, does it, you do a specific D description with the perimeter, or there's a plan already on record, or it's a plot lot shown on a plan, that's fine. But if there isn't, you probably need to create.
So I'm guessing that's, that's an output from the select board when you specify, just to make sure, yeah, okay.
And, and sometimes we've had good success historically, getting enough of our county engineers to do work for us, I don't even know if they still exist. You just have to plan ahead a lot. I don't even know if they still exist, but they do.
It's impossible to get them to do anything. The lead time is too long.
So, so anyway, just to complete the flow and then get comments, coming out of that process is the RFP package. That gets drafted, but here's the, the part that's, you know, not just moved right into a contract, just like we did with the state hospital. That RFP package is the thing that gives people the ability, the residents of the town, the ability to basically read in concrete terms what the town is proposing to do with that property, should the residents agree to authorize the town to dispose of the property. So just like we did with the state hospital, there's an RFP, but the RFP doesn't just go out. It actually is the basis that we would ask the townspeople to approve the article authorizing the disposition. If they authorize the disposition, then we have the RFP that we can then go out and we get right into the contracting. If they don't, then the project's dead, everything we've done goes away, and I guess we go back to the drawing board. So that, that's, that's the flow I'm suggesting. That's the logic to the flow.
That makes sense.
Bill?
So I don't disagree with anything that you said. I just, I, I found out some additional information relating to the, to the parcel over there, and I thought I would get it to you. And I think you're going to need to do some investigations before, or at least in parallel with this as it gets there, before it gets to the RFP stage. And I'm, what I'm trying to hopefully not run into were the problems that we had during the RFP stage, getting all the environmental issues and everything into the RFP. And getting the required pass downs down. So I'm just, I, I just scribbled out something here, so just, listen, agree to everything. So, so right now, so MEPA responded to Trinity's 2023 Notice of Project Change, which according to the LDAs that we had with, both with DCAM and with Trinity, we had to pass down the requirements to go back to submit, presumably another MEPA submittal. All right, so I was going through in preparation for Trinity getting ready to put together their response to the MEPA comments that came back. And in the MEPA comments, MEPA laid out the things that they wanna see in the Single Environmental Impact Report. They also laid out some of the requirements that the town has to do along with this. And one of those requirements basically is to submit a Notice of Project Change for anything that happens on any of the 139 acres, the total 139 acres. So what they've done is they said, we're looking at what, what Trinity is proposing for the, what is it, like, 40 acres, 48 acres? The town has to submit, or the developer that the town is selling, is willing to sell the property to, has to submit a Notice of Project Change for North Field, Arboretum.
If we, if we're doing it.
If you're gonna do it.
Yeah.
But they also talk about 139 acres, and they referenced the MSH master plan. And in the MSH master plan, 139 acres obviously includes parcel B. And the MSH master plan has in it use of the 12 acres for a park and rec function. So you need to make sure that what MEPA's looking for, when you get to the 12 acres, is do we have to submit a Notice of Project Change, or does the developer have to submit a project, Notice of Project Change? And once that's submitted, what are the odds are that they're gonna have to submit a Single Environmental Impact Report? And that's a big chunk of money. You're gonna see the list. I'm putting together a list of what they expect to see from ME, from Trinity, and all of the items that they expect to see in this. And I'm sure Trinity isn't gonna have all those things there, but I'm listing everything. Take me another three or four days to do it. There's a ton of stuff in there. And it's like, how are you, what are you doing to rely, to meet the reliance on, you know, environmental issues and blah, blah, I mean, it's a ton of stuff. So you're gonna wanna get an environmental lawyer to take a look at.
This is the, the advantage here, is at least, we're dealing with open land. If I'm MEPA, with what's on the hospital campus, I would think they would have a whole lot more concerns.
But you'll be dealing with it also on your, on the, let's say you wanna do the North Field, or let's say you wanna do the Arboretum and everything else. You've got a, you've got a notice, and very well, you may have to comply. The problem is, DCAM submitted a MEPA request in 2010 for the whole upper campus area, basically. And that's the baseline that MEPA's looking at when they're saying, what are you doing now? Give me all the differences. Tell me what you're doing to meet these environmental requirements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Hoping you don't have to do that for 12 acres, but you need to find that out. The time to find it out is not after you've got a bid back from somebody saying what they're gonna do in the project, so. I'll help if I can, you know.
Yeah, I kinda figured we'd probably be looking for, yeah, help.
I am, I'm not looking for more, more to do, but, but I mean, I, as I did on for the, for the RFP committee, for the, you know, up campus, I mean, I'll, I'll make some advice. Again, but just be aware of this.
Thank you.
If you go to the next, the last slide, it's only, it's only three slides, and I, I just did this again, just to kinda box in some timeframes. You got the, those three, those three committee, or three, you know, groups doing work. If we are targeting getting something to, for next May's town meeting, without any real technical expertise, I said, well, so we, we're gonna have this discussion somewhere in July would be where we would probably have to start working. I'm guessing realistically, over the summer, we're only meeting like once. We could meet more, but over the summer and into, we're probably gonna need the first half of the fall to really get to good answers around what that 12 acres might be. The requirements committee actions, I basically said I don't think we're gonna form a committee over the summer at all. So the best we can do is try to get a committee up and running in September. So there's, there's room for overlap between deciding what the 12 acres are and having the requirements committee reaching out to stakeholders to get their perspectives. And then basically, though, they would have to probably have that require, the set of what does the town want from this land, that has to be defined by the end, I said, by the end of the year, so that the RFP development committee effectively would have about three and a half months to craft the document that we would use as the reference for the town meeting for people to look at. So it's, you know, it's not like you could never edit that document again, but it's gotta be solid enough that when you tell people this is what we're, this is what we wanna contract for. So then for those people who are for the open space, just philosophically, without regard to what the plan said, or without regard to what we tried to do with, with the Olson property, their chance to make their voice heard is at the vote in town meeting on whether or not to authorize the disposition. So they'll know what we wanna do, but the ones that just say, we don't want you to, to do anything, their voice or their vote is at the town meeting to oppose moving ahead with it. And then we, we either proceed from there, or we're probably dead in the water, at least until somebody comes up with another good idea.
They wanna move up, I don't know what Christine thinks, but the RFP development committee is, get, seems to be getting kind of a late start in light of the typical process for preparing for town meeting and all that.
Yeah, the trick was to get, first off, I'm, I'm being, I'm, I'm worried I'm being optimistic that some sort of public involvement process with, combined with stakeholders meeting to share what they want, getting that all done in four months, including the holidays, to get that. It, that doesn't have to be a complex document, it just has to be a statement of need or a statement of desire. But it has to be, it has to be an input that you can then craft an RFP from. So I'm a little worried, you know, you could start the RFP committee earlier, certainly, whether, if you do it in December, it's the same as doing it in January, so certainly the planning for it, we probably should do sooner. If you do it in November, that other committee's only been around for two months, and I'm not sure. Maybe there's some process things they can do that I'm discounting, but. In, maybe there's some process things they can do that I'm discounting, but I was just, this was just trying to get a, you know, if it if it's May that we have to have this done by, I was just trying to fit some windows that would be ballparks of how it, how it might look.
Well, I just, I just heard you say that you'd be putting essentially the RFP in front of the voters, so that they would know what they were disposing. So that would have to be finalized. That has to go hand in hand in time to get it into the warrant in some form or by reference.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're right. So I, I can't.
It's optimistic.
Well, so either that, or we're saying, no, not even next May.
Maybe a little special.
Hmm?
I would think, I would think even if bare minimum, we got a committee together and they did some reach out to the community, I think we're gonna get a feel from that reach out as to whether this thing's got legs or not.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I think, and if it's got legs, it's worth putting it in front of the town if we say, okay, we, you know, we want to be able to do something over the next three hundred and sixty-five days. So this is what we're sketching out.
Right.
They don't, it's, it's not that it's engraved in stone, but this is significantly better than what we threw at you in whatever, when we, we had the group here in a select board meeting.
My hope was that because, you know, the state hospital development committee had to put a lot of time and effort into that, that RFP, but part of that had to do it because we wanted to maintain, keep buildings. They had to fit within design guidelines. There's, there was a cleanup. There was a whole lot of complications. This is, this is open land. It'll have some probably state restrictions that we have to consider. There's historical issues you brought up in terms of, I'm guessing that we're gonna try to get through those by the selection of the twelve acres.
If I, if I can, Christine, if I can make a suggestion, I'll pull the appropriate language out of the MIPA letter that came back. It's really, it's addressed to Trinity, but it's also got, I said, the town items are in there. I'll pull those out. And presumably you want to run them through the same person who did your environmental stuff on the LDAs with Trinity. Let them take a look at and figure out a way to handle this. I mean, I'm not sure that you're gonna have to do environmental impact report. I'm not sure that you don't have to do one.
Right.
I just, it's, it's very confusing.
My point is that.
A lot of would be, would be on the developer who's going to purchase the property, do that.
Yeah, will be the impact, yeah, but.
Something we have to do.
But if you don't need it.
Right.
You don't, you don't wanna put it in an RFP.
Yeah, but that's the due diligence of the, of people responding to the RFP as well.
But you need, you need to demystify the recording. But for example, I had a big issue with the lawyer for the committee, the RFP committee originally, because he didn't recognize any of the environmental restrictions that were imposed on us by the the main LDA and the sale to the, you know, D C A M.
So my hope on this one, because it's an open, you're not, you're not, don't already have stuff there. It's open land. Yeah, there'll be some probably hoops we gotta go through, but.
And historic, uh, historic district, I forget what that's calling.
Yeah, but I don't know what, I mean, yes, but I don't know what historic means when there's nothing there.
Well, there is, there, there.
I was, I was there when that happened, and basically the vista was included within the definition of the historic district.
Yes. But we, but the, but the state sold us something, the state authorized us to have twelve acres of developable land to sit there and say, well, you can develop it as long as it's invisible.
Well, even they was subject to, now, once, once you create the historic district, you then, you then subject to that. That's the only point.
Yeah, the, the master.
Maybe outside of it, I don't know.
But you hear what I'm saying, Mark. If if what you're suggesting is that the historic district would come in and say, ah, vista, you can't put anything in here that destroys the vista, 'cause that's what it's all in. That's fraud.
All I can say is it's a possibility.
That's, I, I think that's fraud, because we were told by the state we could do what we wanted with the land that we bought.
This, I think what Mark's referencing is our local historic district.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
If that, if that's the case, then we should be able to have a local historic district that will do that.
It's not that simple. I'm just saying.
Just, I don't know what to, I don't know what to do with that right here, Mark. And so do we?
I'm just saying, it's another thing to be concerned about.
But I don't know what to do with it. I mean, I, I already picked up on that with the presentation that was made when we first talked about this. That locally, we we have, if we have opposition locally with people who have agendas of their own that are gonna interfere with this, we're gonna have a big fight.
Once you have a local historic district, mass historic gets jurisdiction.
So, and your point in terms of what we do right now is what?
Determine when you're identifying the twelve acres, whether or not it's within the district as already defined. How was that district defined? You wanna go back and look at that, and then just be aware of it and apply it. That's all.
So go, go back, go back one slide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The second oval that I have, clarify any existing limits on allowed development of land is why I have that there.
Okay, can I, can I just, just, just quickly, the, so I was on a negotiation committee for the purchase of land, and and I made a, a point of ensuring that the town could do pretty much whatever it wanted to do with the property in terms of what got built there or anything else. But if you look at the master plan for the, for the state hospital and everything else, all of that parcel, the, the whole thirty-eight and a half acres or thirty-nine acres.
The Trinity.
No, no, ours, parcel B, the whole of parcel B is within the historic farm district. And as you, as I've mentioned in the past, there are at least eight structures or down there in that area where it seems to be the most ideal place to build something, around the old Odyssey house.
So when you say, I, I'm curious about eight structures. There's no structures down there.
There are. There's stone, a stone wall is, well, you have to.
Okay, stone wall, stone wall. We're not talking building.
Yeah, and you have to look at what's in, yeah. If you look at the National Historic Register, I mean, you've got foundations, you've got stone walls. And for example, the, like, the, the green, the half of the green at the, in the core campus is on a National Historic Register. Right? But there is a, a vista issue, and the master plan has a whole section on maintaining the historic nature of the buildings that were there that aren't even there anymore and everything else. So I mean, but that's, so that's all in there, and the state will look at that. The other issue is, you don't have all of your historic tax credits. Yes, you need to be careful that the park service is gonna.
I had a, I had a conversation with Trinity about that, and they are not worried about any development on parcel B will have no impact on their historic tax credits.
Great.
Yep.
That's fine. That's very important. I mean.
Yeah, they, we heard that four or five months ago.
Because you remember there was an issue whether it's what we did with the Arboretum, whether anything there was gonna have an impact. That's, that's good. That is important. That's a major item to cross off. That's good.
Okay, so a- anyway, I don't wanna beat this to death. I just laid this out as me pushing my preliminary thinking a step forward. You know, you all should sleep on it, and there may be smarter ways to do it than this, but.
No, I think this is a great idea. I mean, if we don't start doing something, we're gonna be spinning until, so flushing out your, the two circles, and then like vocalizing right now, we're looking for people to step up that wanna be in this committee. And we should be thinking about what, who we, what demographics in town we want represented. Is it somebody from, from Parks and Rec? Is it somebody from, you know, if it's?
I don't think that requirements committee is a whoever would like to volunteer to be on it committee. That's a, that's a issue of us really thinking through who are the stakeholders
Okay.
that need to be at the table, you know, and and I'm not, I'm trying to work within the context of the Open Space and Recreation Plan, where suddenly we had this, instead of a Parks and Rec facility being what was needed, it was a community center. And I don't envision us realistically looking at developing two significant non-essential town facilities. So the concept of what this thing might be, it's not, I, as I said in our prior meeting, Parks and Rec certainly has a dominant voice in what it is we might need, but there could be, COA might need something. The schools, they may have interests in certain facilities being included, either in what goes in the, in the town's property, or what goes into the commercial property, that they would be, you know, they could take advantage of, that would be an amenity to the town and could be potentially a benefit to the, to the developer, if that's the direction this whole project takes. So, so I don't know who all those stakeholders should be. I don't think it's just a Parks and Rec discussion, 'cause we could do it, you know, we could have that and it would be a simpler thing, but I don't think it's, we're gonna figure out what we want south of Hospital Road, who would like to be on. I think it has to be very deliberate, who we consider the stakeholders to be, so that they can come together. We, we may need a facilitator for that.
Can we put that on the July first agenda? That's just basically two weeks away.
Of who, discussion.
Gonna take this next.
Discussion of who the stakeholders, if, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's been a long day.
And, and as well as feedback on the, you know, this, you just, you guys just saw it.
We'll do a continued discussion item.
Yep.
Great. Uh, next, uh, vote to approve the engagement letter with Odyssey advisor.
We're gonna hold that. We're gonna hold this one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good, yeah, we, no votes there.
Yep. Holding eight.
Vote to approve the engagement letter with Odyssey advisors for actuarial valuation of the town's other post-employment benefits liability.
That's the one we're gonna hold.
Oh, we, oh, we are gonna hold it.
We're gonna hold, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, then I'll give you some.
Give us some feedback, 'cause we're going through it with them. Yep.
Okay, I'll give you the feedback, and I have some comments on that. Uh, next, vote to authorize ten thousand dollars to be taken from the Wetlands Protection Trust Fund to pay for C E I conservation. Is C E I is a, is this a contract conservation agent?
That was when we had Bob Hartzell, uh, who worked for C E I as contracted in the first part of this year before we hired Finn.
Okay, so we still owe him ten thousand dollars then?
Uh, we owe him more than that, but we're gonna take ten thousand of it from the Conservation Trust Fund, uh, which is typically where we usually take a ten thousand dollar offset to the conservation agent salary.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, okay. Uh, next, vote to authorize the fire chief to sign the medical control affiliation agreement between the Newton Wellesley Hospital and the Medfield Fire Department?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Okay, next, vote to authorize the town administrator to sign an agreement fixing the town's natural gas pricing.
This is, once again.
What, is it broken?
Is that shady or is that legit?
I know, it's, it sounds shady, but it is legit. I am fixing it. This is our annual futures discussion over gas and electricity, so we are getting ready to finalize what our natural gas pricing is. But I, uh, we don't know when we're gonna sign it, but it's probably gonna be before the end of the year.
See, I, I see this picture of Christine with her, with her cell phone, and Brittany saying.
I have that little green hat.
And Brit, and Brittany saying, is it time? It goes, hold, hold.
Yes, this is exactly what we do.
All I can tell you is you've got a very short period of time to, to, to pin it down once, once the offer's.
Yes, you've just played it out exactly how it happens.
So, alright.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's not have our vote slow down. The ability to push the button. Vote to sign the Sergy two thousand twenty-six Water and Sewer Chemical Supply Award, the two thousand twenty-six Paper and Office Supply Award, and the two thousand twenty-six D P W Supply Award. Like, did we, I don't, that wasn't.
I was gonna say, you lose on the.
I just, I, I did print out the sheets for you.
Oh, is that, okay, that's chemical. I was gonna say, when I just read that, I wait a minute.
These.
Okay, so it's three hundred, roughly three hundred thousand dollars for the chemicals?
So the, yeah.
Yeah, I think you always buy the lowest price, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not like this is a, this is not really requiring major contemplation. It's pretty straightforward.
You're not obligated to, you're not obligated to.
No, no, okay.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next is vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the vacant property insurance renewal for Medfield State Hospital with Corcoran and Havlin Insurance Group for F Y twenty-six, and I saw that also in here.
So moved.
Is it, just out of curiosity, we probably should find out what it cost and whether it went up.
Uh, it went up a little bit.
Went up, so it's eight thousand dollars and went up just a little bit, okay?
Alright, I heard a, so moved, so I was second.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passed, and vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the one eleven F slash injured on duty coverage proposal for F Y twenty-six. This is the same thing we've done every year.
So we've done it every year, although we're going with a new carrier this year, and we've had the same carrier for about six years. Um, our renewal came in about twenty-five thousand dollars greater than last year. Uh, we knew we would have a slight increase over last year. We've added the four safer firefighters, so we knew there'd be somewhat of an increase. Twenty-five thousand pushed us to request a bid from Maya, who does our property and casualty. They came in, I basically turned this over to the chiefs to determine what coverage was best for their people, um, and they have asked us to go with Maya at a cost savings of about thirty-five thousand dollars to the town.
Excellent.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
And Bethany's done a great job handling all of the background work on this. I know.
Then we have two, two items on the consent agenda, request from the Medfield Public Library to use Warrior Park for the following events, summer reading kickoff, June twenty-first, featuring our super popular baby goat petting zoo from ten to two, padawan training event, July twenty-sixth, two-hour timeframe between ten AM to two PM, to be determined based on volunteer schedules, and summer reading closer, August sixteenth, eleven AM to two PM, foam party with slushies, eleven to twelve. So, and then the second item, I think under the, yeah, consent agenda. Vote to approve the one-day beer wine permit for a fundraiser at Blue Moon Bagel Cafe on Friday, May thirteenth, so this is retroactive, from five to nine PM, which I think.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the, the one question I, or point I wanted to raise, now that we've clarified who has care custody and control of Warrior Park, it, should we look at establishing some understanding with the library that they don't need to, that there might be circumstances that they don't need to formally ask us for permission? They've, they've always used the land. I mean, you know, I don't wanna have them get hung up with, with the summertime gazebo concerts, but they, they won't. I, I don't think we necessarily need to force them to have to ask us for permission to use the land right outside the library that they've been using.
I, I think that would be really great. They're always really good at telling us what's going on anyway, so if we thought there'd be a conflict, they would at least let us know. So I think that would be great.
You guys, you guys are okay with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, and, and, you know, if, if we get cross-threaded, then we can change our policy, but they don't have to ask us for this stuff. That should, they should be able to just do it. I think. Okay, uh, next is meeting minutes. We don't have any town administrator updates.
I'm just gonna keep it very brief for tonight, since we've been together for an extended period of time today. Just to let you know, uh, we are a little behind with the year-end close. We're gonna issue two summer issues for the town administrator updates, so we'll have that for your next meeting.
Uh, next meeting date is July first. Uh, these are all, we read them every time. I guess I can do it. Uh, August twelfth, single meeting, September sixteenth and September thirtieth are our two September meetings, October seventh and October twenty-first are our two October meetings, November fourth and November eighteenth are our two November meetings, and December second and December sixteenth are our two December meetings. At least as things stand right now with Brittany's latest update, less than a week old.
Alright, so we, so I just wanna make sure, so where we were going to do one in mid-July, we're not doing that at all. We're just gonna do July first, and then we're gonna be, we might just have to poke our head in here sometime, just to sign warrants and whatever. Okay, uh, since we won't be doing something in the middle of the month. Okay.
Okay, and then it's, uh, select board members' reports.
Alrighty, uh, so we've actually been relatively busy since our last meeting. I had a chance to attend the Eagle Scout Ceremony for Matthew Johnson Junior this past weekend. Very nice event, as always, um, and a nice turnout as I was talking. They had the, the Lancer Group there, um, as based on the work he's been doing, and that his project was the twenty bat houses, which helps with the, the mosquitoes around the horses, so it's important. Went to the school building committee meeting, um, everything's moving along there. Uh, there was a lot of discussion, kind of like just following communications and, um, getting ready for, uh, Medfield Day and things like that. Sat in the Medfield Housing Authority meeting as the representative from the Select Board to Affordable Housing Trust, and then being the representative from the Affordable Housing Trust to Medfield Housing Authority. And during that meeting, they talked about an event that I wasn't aware of, but I was able to attend the next day, which was an event at Tilden Village. Um, there was a pavilion built. It was built by the, the students at Tri County, and so it was really nice. It was attended by, hosted by Candace Avery, uh, who's the executive director. Obviously Catherine McDonald was there being chair, uh, Josh Tarski was able to attend. He had to do something earlier in the morning and was able to show up in the afternoon. We waited for him, gave a nice speech. But what was really fun is they had a DJ for a gentleman that lives in the Milis Housing Authority, who does a lot of activities over there, came over and hosted a little music thing, and they had sandwiches and pizza, and the young kids so engaged with the residents. And the residents were genuinely sincere with their appreciation, 'cause it was a really good turnout. It was packed. And then we also had a chance to celebrate Bob, 'cause Bob, Bulba Gun Bob, his birthday was the next. And then we also had a chance to celebrate Bob, 'cause Bob, Bulbogon Bob, his birthday was the next day, so they, they sang happy birthday to him, and everyone had a chance to celebrate his birthday, so it was a really fun event. And you saw the wayfinding presentation, so the wayfinding meeting, we had that this past Friday. Had a Affordable Housing Trust meeting, talked a little about Habitat Humanities, and as you know, they were supposed to be here tonight, and they canceled, 'cause Habitat's kind of evaluating that project all, all over, I mean, altogether. Gave the update on what's, I represent the Trinity Project, so gave an update of what's happening with Trinity, and then there are a few other topics, such as like the update and what's happening with Plain Street, and a few other projects. Uh, and then last but not least, I'm gonna make a comment, 'cause he didn't make any comment, but the transfer sticker station, just so people know for a short window here, you are not going to be able to use a credit card because of the software update that's going on. So, if anyone is coming to the town hall to get a transfer, their transfer station stickers, it's check only, and don't get mad at anybody, it's just a software glitch with the upgrade that's going on, so it's check only. And hopefully, you're saying by hopefully that.
We're hoping by July first, we'll back up and running.
Okay. All right.
That means no cash?
No cash.
We don't take any cash anymore.
Okay. I'm just emphasizing that.
Yeah, though I said they had no cash, just so, right now it is strictly checks, so.
Pete?
The Medfield Foundation had its annual meeting, um, the Energy Committee had a meeting, and they are just so busy, they went through the Green Community stuff, they went through Gus's MOU issues, talked about the specialized energy code that we heard about tonight. Andrew Gerald, who was here tonight, reported on the School Building Committee status, and it's a little early for the Energy Committee input into that, but, uh, and then the solar people, which is Penny, actually Connor, who handles that, talked about the Medfield High School canopy. When that gets done, the town solar will, will double. There's an issue that the federal bill that's pending in Congress may affect that, credits, and the vi, the financial viability of that. Public safety building, solar, the, I guess the, the fix of that turned out to be a lot less than people thought. There was a request to actually, by some good group, to put something onto the website, and Christine explained that we don't do that. There was a discussion about whether we should be putting things onto the website about what the Energy Committee is doing, and the decision was that it really just should go onto the annual report, and that's where people can find it. And last, uh, I think it was last Friday, I went to a fundraiser at Blue Moon for the Eva LaRoe Scholarship, and the Blue Moon people just do a wonderful job for things in our town. I met one of the Mahonies who, is, I guess they're two brothers that own it now, who grew up in Medfield, they told me that, he told me that his father, John Moynahan.
The Monahan's.
Was a firefighter in town, and I can remember meeting John at some point or other, but.
Collective bargaining.
It's just, it's so impressive what, what those two guys are doing, I mean, I remember the holidays, they just put out something saying, anybody that needs anything, let us know, and we'll give it to you, and, and, and they were basically doing the same thing for the scholarship fund, so.
And did they get a good turnout, 'cause I know that the girls' lacrosse game was going on at the same time, so I thought, oh, what a bummer that the.
There weren't a ton of people there when I was there.
Yeah, there, there's a shadow too, I didn't say this in my report, girls' lacrosse, back-to-back state championships, kudos.
Yeah, we should have them in, that I'm here in the room, and that's it.
Okay. Well, I think the town should note that two out of three Select Board members were busy doing things on behalf of the town, I was out of town in Coos Bay, Oregon, visiting my son, his wife, and our new six-month-old grandson, so I didn't get any really useful town stuff done while I, and when I came back, my router is out, so this has only been the, the second day of the week that I have gotten anything done since I got back from Oregon. It was a great trip, and we just love our grandson. I think you guys all didn't mention it, but, you know, I think you both were there, but I did, I did attend Mary Harney's visiting hours on, on Friday, Friday, oh, no, Thursday, Thursday night.
I attended that as well, yes.
And, you know, it, it's sad to see people that have been, they were around here long before I even got to the town. Inevitably, time passes and people fade out, but it was still another person that, sorry to see her go. And then.
An accomplished lady, she was.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that was about all I did, as I recall, that I can take any credit for, so. We'll leave it at that. I'm sure I'll get more done in the coming two weeks.
Move to adjourn.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thanks, if there's still anybody out there still listening. And thanks, Medfield TV.